Good morning Wichita and welcome to all of you to City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this morning is Minister Nina Shaw Woody with the Kansas Family Advisory Network, who will provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask that you please stand for both.
Good morning. Let's pray. Father in the name of Jesus, we just thank you for this day that you have given us. Father God, I just thank you for our city council members, our mayor, and all those who are present, Father. I thank you that you give them wisdom and understanding, counsel and might, knowledge and the fear of the Lord. Give them the wisdom to be able to make the decisions that need to be made today that will make all our residents within Cedric County and in the city of Wichita to be able to be a great city. Help them be able to take care of the needs of all the demographic of people represented today. And Father God, just bless them, keep them, sustain them, and love on them and let them know that they have been sitting here and they are appointed by you to do a work for the people. And we just thank you and we just praise you for what you're going to do through them today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Nina. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of regular meeting April 22nd, 2025.
Are there any items to be pulled or corrected? I see none. I move to approve the minutes of regular meeting April 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. The proclamations this week are Provider Appreciation Day, Water Safety Month, and Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And the award is a service award for Dean R. Meford, Airport Department.
May please ask Child Start and any supporters with Provider Appreciation Day to please come forward, including Councilmember Becky Tuttle. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Child Start Inc. and the city of Wichita Child Care Licensing and other organizations nationwide are recognizing licensed childcare providers on this day as young children need skilled, educated, competent, devoted, consistent, and compensated early care and educated professionals. Whereas over half the children under the age of six nationwide are estimated to spend a majority of time with an early care and education professional on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block in our economy. Whereas high-quality early care and education play a vital role in mitigating the effects of poverty, identifying and addressing developmental delays, and preventing child neglect. These programs also foster the development of essential social-emotional skills and cultivate healthy peer relationships, laying the foundation for academic readiness and lifelong success. Whereas young children need developmentally appropriate, accessible, and available early care and education settings, working families need a strong regulatory structure to give them peace of mind that their children are safe and in high-quality early care and education settings. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 9th, 2025 as Provider Appreciation Day in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recognize licensed childcare providers for their important work."
Good morning. My name is Mandy Wa. I am the Early Childhood Connections Program Director at Child Start. Thank you for letting me speak to you about celebrating and recognizing a group of professionals whose dedication, heart, and hard work often go unseen but never go unfelt, our childcare providers. May 9th is Childcare Appreciation Day. This is a day to pause and truly honor the incredible impact that the early childhood professionals have on our children, our families, and our communities. They are among the first to greet our children in the morning and often the last to say goodbye in the evening. They nurture, teach, comfort, and guide, playing a vital role in shaping young minds and supporting emotional growth in the most critical early years of life. Childcare providers are more than caregivers. They are educators, mentors, problem solvers, and often an extended part of our families. They show up with patience, resilience, and love no matter the challenges. They help children take their first steps, learn their first words, and build the confidence that will carry them through life. Their work also makes everything else possible. Without dependable, quality childcare, parents and guardians can't fully participate in the workforce, pursue education, and provide for their families. Early care and education is the foundation that supports not just childhood development but our entire economy and future. So today, let us say thank you not just with words but with action and advocacy. Let's recognize the true value of their work and continue to support policies and programs that uplift this essential profession. To every childcare provider, you matter deeply, your work is powerful, and your dedication does not go unnoticed. We appreciate you, not just today but every day. We also want to thank the entire city council for recognizing the importance of advocating for our youngest learners. In particular, we are deeply grateful to Councilmember Tuttle for helping us elevate this critical conversation and for the countless hours she has spent championing the needs of our providers, children, and families. As a continued demonstration of our commitment to support and advocating for childcare providers, we are proud to announce that Councilmember Tuttle has been selected as the recipient of the Early Education Advocate Award, which will be presented which will be presented at our Legacy Gala on June 24th. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to all who worked tirelessly to uplift and support childcare providers. Your efforts make a lasting difference. Thank you.
May please ask the city of Wichita's Park and Recreation Department to come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. Whereas the city of Wichita is committed to improving the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community by educating the public on water safety to prevent drownings and water-related injuries. Whereas the city is dedicated to creating safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, and related activities, which provide healthy places to recreate, learn, grow, and build self-esteem, confidence, and sense of self-worth, all of which contribute to the quality of life in our community. Whereas it is of vital importance to communicate water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors at water parks. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Water Safety Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to adhere to safety practices while enjoying any water recreation activities."
Good morning. It's a true honor to stand before you today as we recognize and celebrate this water safety proclamation. I want to begin by sincerely thanking the mayor and city council for their commitment to raising awareness about such a vital issue, which is water safety. Every year, far too many lives are lost to preventable water-related incidents. Behind every statistic is a name, a family, and a community forever changed. And that is why today's proclamation is more than just formality, it is a call to action. Water safety is not just about being careful around pools and lakes, it's about empowering people of all ages, especially our children, with the knowledge and skills that they need to stay safe around, in and around the water. It's about awareness, preparation, and responsibility. One of the most effective tools that we have is education, and at the heart of that are swimming lessons. Learning how to swim isn't just a recreational skill, it's a lifesaving one. Studies show that formal swimming lessons can reduce the risk of drowning by as much as 88% among young children. That is a staggering statistic that underscores how essential swim education is in our community. With our partners, the American Red Cross, we are expanding access to swimming lessons to educate families about water hazards and to ensure that every child, regardless of background, has the opportunity to be water-safe through scholarship opportunities to reduce the cost of swim lesson and make them affordable for all. Thank you again for this important proclamation. Let's continue working together to make water safety a priority, not just this month but every day of the year. Thank you.
May please ask the Wichita Asian Association to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the culture, traditions, and history of Asian American and Pacific Islanders in the United States as it was permanently designated by the U.S. Congress starting in 1992. Whereas the nearly 20,000 Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders residing in Wichita consist of many ethnicities, languages, and achievements that embody the American experience. Whereas many leaders in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors in Wichita are Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Whereas the Wichita community has benefited through the cultural richness, diversity, and contributions of its local Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders with events and programs such as the annual Wichita Asian Festival and several other events held throughout the calendar year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to join the Wichita Asian Association in supporting efforts that increase public education about Asian American and Pacific Islanders in the United States."
Thank you, Mayor Wu. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sonali Gurlekar. I'm the president of Wichita Asian Association. I'm honored to recognize and welcome you to celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, that's the month of May. It's a time to honor the rich cultures, histories, and contribution of our AAPI communities. This month, we will be hosting a series of cultural activities and events across the Wichita, including some of them going to be at the Botanica, Markarts, also during the River Festival. This year, Wichita Asian Association recognized the individuals making the exceptional contributions in art, education, business, leadership, and community service within the greater Wichita community. Mayor Lilly Fu was the recipient of Virginia Leadership Award during our Asian Association Gala that we hosted on May 1st. We also would like to invite you to our signature event, and that's a Wichita Asian Festival. We will be hosting that on September 27th from 5:00 to 9:30 p.m. at the Century 2. Thank you once again. Let's celebrate this rich heritage, traditions, and contributions of AAPI communities together.
May please ask the city manager to also join me as we ask Dean Meford of Airports to please come forward at this time. And his family, if they would like to come and join him. We are recognizing 24 years of distinguished service to the city of Wichita. This award is for Dean Meford, presented in recognition of dedicated and notorious service rendered to the community and citizens of Wichita, Kansas. In his 24 years and seven months of service, Mr. Meford has served as an Equipment Operator II at Airport Services Officer and is retiring as General Supervisor II, and we thank him for his 24 years of service to the citizens of Wichita.
Didn't know I was required to speak, sorry. I'm not originally a native of Wichita. I was serving in the United States Air Force stationed at McConnell, and when my career came to an end, I decided to stay here. Met a lovely lady, married her, and then I soon got employment with the city of Wichita with Airport Authority. Over my years, I've seen a lot of changes, including a brand-new terminal and a nationally-recognized airport, and I've enjoyed my time, and I think the city of Wichita is a great employer, and I'm glad to have been here for so many years.
Thank you very much, Dean, again, for your service. We'll take a picture with the city manager? Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public Agenda. The Public Agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the Public Agenda other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Sybil Strum. How can anyone seize a home without warning?
Is Sybil here this morning? I do not see Sybil. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Mark Diller, Ronald McDonald House Charities of Wichita.
Mark Diller, 551 North Hillside, Suite 100. Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Wu, and city council members for this opportunity to be with you this morning to share a little bit about Ronald McDonald House Charities Wichita, or RMHC Wichita for short. The mission of RMHC Wichita is to provide essential services that remove barriers, strengthen families, and promote healing when children need health care. Since 1983, RMHC Wichita, a 501(c)(3) organization, has served families with sick or hospitalized children from every county in Kansas and beyond when they travel to Wichita for their child's health needs. Families of children aged 21 or younger who travel 30 miles or further from home to Wichita can stay at RMHC Wichita free of charge, including meals and other essential amenities, so that they can focus on their child's healing. Families experiencing at-risk pregnancies can also stay at RMHC Wichita to deliver and throughout their NICU stay if needed. The average stay at Ronald McDonald House Wichita is 10 days, although some families have stayed for over five months. In 2019, RMHC Wichita moved from our sleepy hollow and midtown houses into our current location in the Wesley Medical Plaza, formerly known as the Health Strategies Building, where we now have 20 rooms for families to stay no matter where their child is receiving care in Wichita. We also have a family room in Wesley where food, snacks, and laundry facilities are available, as well as a mobile care cart that provides refreshments to families. These services are free of charge so families can focus on their child's health and healing. To date, over 55,000 families have been served through our Ronald McDonald House and Ronald McDonald Family Room. We are currently in conversation with medical providers as part of our strategic planning process to understand what needs may currently be unmet while also getting a sense where needs may increase. For example, as pediatric specialists from Children's Mercy have a greater presence in Wichita, some families can receive services in Wichita that would have previously required being referred to Children's Mercy in Kansas City. At Wichita's, as Wichita's presence as a regional hub for health care grows, RMHC Wichita has experienced a considerable increase in occupancy in 2025. In fact, through April of this year, 221 nightly stays have been provided to families in local hotels when RMHC has been full. That number is 133 in all of 2024. While partnership with local hotels has allowed for reduced rates, RMHC has paid for those rooms to ease the financial burden on families traveling to Wichita for their child's care. As long-term plans are being considered, financial assistance to help serve families is greatly appreciated. Today, I would like to call upon the Wichita community to help support families when they need it most. There are many ways to get involved. Financial support is greatly appreciated as costs and overall need for service have increased. Money donated to Ronald McDonald House Charities Wichita stays local to serve families of children receiving care right here in Wichita. Our volunteer meal program is also a tangible way to help serve families by providing nutritious meals that families can, so that families can focus on their child's needs. Please visit our website at rmhcwichita.org for many ways to get involved, including our annual gala on Saturday, June 7. And if you visit McDonald's restaurants, please ask to round up, as this money helps support RMHC families. And lastly, I would like to invite you to visit RMHC Wichita for a tour and to see how families are served when their children are sick or injured. Councilmember Johnson, thank you for visiting our location in District 1. Mayor Wu, I look forward to your visit upcoming. And I would like to also extend an invitation to all council members to visit RMHC Wichita and the community as well, to see how families with sick or hospitalized children are supported. Thank you again for the opportunity to share about Ronald McDonald House Charities Wichita.
Thank you very much for the service you provide to the families and to the kiddos. And so, I know that I'm looking forward to the tour, I believe that I have that to be scheduled, so for any of my fellow council members who would like to join me, we can talk afterwards. So, thank you very much, Mark.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Nancy Bradford, Rosie's Snuggle Bunnies Pet Therapy.
Good morning, and thank you for having us today. I'm Nancy Bradford, 14328 West 95th Street, South in Clearwater. Rosie Snuggle Bunnies is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit founded by a veteran and his wife based in Sedgwick County. Our mission is to provide support, comfort, and healing through trained therapy rabbits and now pygmy goats. We serve veterans, hospice patients, children, individuals suffering from PTSD, depression, and trauma. Our services include pet therapy visits to Wesley Children's Hospital every other week, hospice centers, facilities, and inpatient homes, the VA, hospice, and TLC units, as well as many other VFW events where we are members. We also support the community in their mental health events and organizations. In honor of our late therapy rabbit, Rosie, who was Rosie the Rabbieter with the playoff logo, you can see her, she looks like Rosie the Rabbieter, she passed away this past Saturday. In honor, in her honor, we launched the Veteran Emotional Support Animal Program. We provide Flemish Giant rabbits, as Josie is, as ESA companions to Kansas veterans and their families suffering with PTSD and anxiety. Each veteran receives a trained rabbit, supplies, and initial veterinary care, and ongoing support. Four veterans have already been matched in the last two months, including one who attended the recent Kansas Honor Flight Welcome Home. Based on our community impact, we've allowed 100-plus therapy visits per probably quarter in Sedgwick County and surrounding areas. We are currently collaborating with USD 259 students and staff to provide some volunteer hours that will remodel our goat barn and give them a wonderful place to be housed at night, so they're protected from other wildlife. Upcoming expansion is the goat barn where we are currently have the two pygmy goats in training. They think they're lap dogs, but we're working on that. The support we need is volunteer recruitment, so if anybody is interested in coming out to Clearwater, spending some time with the rabbits, not only socializing but cleaning, once we can certify and train volunteers, then they can come pick up the rabbits and take them out to visits. Currently, we only have probably four of us that are doing the visits. Clinton and I both have full-time jobs, so our time is limited as well. So, we know there's much more of a need than what he and I and the four volunteers who are currently trained can handle. We're looking for business partnerships to support and grow our emotional support program and just awareness in city-level collaboration. We would like to invite you to our fundraiser on May 24th, that is the Saturday of Labor Day. We're having it at our VFW 3115 at Douglas and Anna, just north of Town West. We'll raise funds for the ESA placements and continued animal care and advancements. It is open to the public, and we invite everyone to attend. In closing, we ask that the city council help raise awareness of our mission, support our support our services and organizations serving veterans and those in crisis, and visit one of our therapy sessions to see the impact that we have. And we appreciate your time and effort in closing.
Thank you very much, Clinton, Nancy, and Josie coming here this morning. We have several council members who would like to speak. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a question. Josie is probably the biggest rabbit I have ever seen in my life. What does Josie eat? Is it, is it regular food? Or do they get like whole heads of lettuce?
That is a very common question that we get. They are Flemish Giant rabbits. And the Flemish Giant rabbits are kind of like big dogs, little dogs. They're just the big rabbits of rabbit breeds. Primarily, their diet consists of hay, Brom hay, alfalfa hay, Timothy hay, and a little bit of parrot pellets. We have bougie bunnies. They eat lots of greens also. Not necessarily do they have to have that, but you know, ours get a little bit spoiled. But they also like vegetables and things like that.
That is awesome. I think Josie would scare my beagle. I think it would be hilarious, but...
As, as a side note, Josie, all of our rabbits are named kind of a military theme. The bunny barn is called the Bunny Barracks, which is also decorated military theme. So we had Rosie the Rabbieter, Private Radar O. Smiley, Playoff of MASH, Amelia Earhart, who is a double amputee. She had some complications during surgery and doesn't have any back legs. Mama Josie Nesbit is named after a World War II soldier who was one of the biggest groups of American POW women in the Philippines in World War II. And then, who have I left out? Lieutenant Dan. And Lieutenant Dan does have his legs, but Amelia doesn't, so, and yeah, eh, whatever.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, and thank you for your service. There's a lot of people in the community who you're helping. Next year, can we get the goats in here as well?
Sure.
I, I know we have some people in here who are afraid of rabbits, so maybe the, the little pygmy goats will be a little easy.
Yeah, we, we, we'll work on bringing Ranger and Rowdy in. I'm still perfecting, still perfecting their attire when they go inside. But I think I've about got it. So yeah, next year, we can do that.
Diapers, diapers, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you again, Nancy, and really appreciate that I see you around the community, really doing this work. And as you mentioned, you only have four that can go around the community, so you need more volunteers. And I appreciate you bringing Josie in. And I'm sorry for the passing of Rosie the Rabbieter. But really appreciate what you do. And it is Mental Health Awareness Month, so again, thank you for what you do for the mental health of our community.
Absolutely, it's our pleasure.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next individual.
Chris Brolt, Issues with the Downtown Library.
Is Chris here? I see he's not here. We now have room for three individuals to speak, if any three individuals who would like to address the council. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Shawnee Austin, and I am homeless.
Timery Burrows, homeless as well.
And we come to talk about our nonprofit organization that we have started, and we're trying to launch a mobile unit. We're with Grassroots Bridge Builders. We are advocates for the homeless, and we're starting a peer, peer support, where homeless help homeless. I'm helping her get her stuff together, and she's helping me keep myself together. And so, we want to launch our mobile unit where we can get out and help more people. Like if the homeless need a shower, we want to have a shower in there for them, for... I'm sorry, yeah. We want to have a shower there for them. Nurse on site, therapy on site, all in this one RV that we're renovating. We've been working our hard, our hard to get it going. We had to really take everything out of it because it was mold, it was leaking and stuff. So hopefully, we, we working on it today. We want to get it running by the end of the month. We're just asking for support, help. If you go to our website, Grassroots Bridge Builders, or, and it has the number, it has videos of us working on it. It has our launch date. It has a telephone number where you can call and reach out, and we'll tell you where the location and where we renovate in the RV at. Yeah, we really would like to help from our community to get this launched in time to help the homeless. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. What was that website you had mentioned?
Uh, Grassroots Bridge Builders. We're on YouTube, TikTok, Facebook. It's Grassroots Bridge Builders, or you can go to grassrootsnursingitc@gmail.com, or Bridge Builders ITC org.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you guys have a link or post on your, do you have like a Facebook page or something?
Yes, it's all on Facebook, yeah. It can be shared. It's all on Facebook, can be shared. It's on YouTube, can be shared. TikTok, it can be shared. Instagram, it can be shared.
Well, I have one of those, so. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. I'll be on the lookout for it.
All right, thank you so much.
We have room for two more individuals. I see none. We'll bring it back. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 37.
Are there items to be pulled? Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull Item 28 and 23B.
Say the number again, 2.
28 and then 23B.
And Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 6 and Item 11, please.
Did someone say 13 yet? We have 6, 11, 8, and 3B. Is that correct? Got it. So we have four items to be pulled. Any other items? I see none. I move to approve all consent agenda items without 6, 11, 8, and 3B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0 with a verbal vote by Councilmember Tuttle. We'll go in numerical order, if that's okay. We'll start with 3B.
Thank you, Mayor. These kind of go together. So Items 3B and Item 8. 3B was Contract for Professional Services for Real Estate Consultants from, for Douglas from Seneca Street to Meridian. But then subsequently later on, in 28, it was Approval of Offers for the Douglas Avenue from Seneca Street to Meridian Avenue. So did we already go out for bid? I just wanted to know the context of these because they seem conflicting, or seems that one has to happen for the other to happen.
Well, what we've done is, with the short-term timeframe that has been placed on us for the acquisitions, we went out for Request for Proposals to select a consultant to do the acquisitions on behalf of the city. That was initiated in late February, and that process completed in late April, hence the contract that's in front of you today. The approval of the offers, in just trying to get everything with this project in place, so the consultant can get onboarded right away. The approval of the offers is being on the agenda today for the consultant to initiate offers with the property owners. So with the approval of the contract, we will go ahead and start our process with LAI.
So if one is the Contract for Professional Services and one is the Approval of the Offers, Approval of Offers would mean that there are offers presented, correct? So have they already started the work?
No, they have not. The approval of the offers is just a formality which is required by the Uniform Act. So we will not initiate the Approval of the Offers without a consultant in place.
Okay. A few more questions regarding this is, in Item 3B, it says that we're having to do this because of lack of ability to do this in-house. How many individuals short are we to do this in-house? And how long have we known that we'd be short these individuals? How commonplace is it to contract this for suing in-house?
Projects like this, with this shorter timeframe, the respondents were going to staff it from anywhere from four to eight people. So the firm that's been selected here today has five staff members that they'll put on this project full-time.
Full-time? And then that's the total cost of that is $358,000 for that?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if I had any other questions. I think that's all the questions I have regarding both of these.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions on that. Since it's, the total is 358, but it's 2,900 per parcel. Is that a typical amount? And did we negotiate that amount?
The proposals that came in ranged anywhere from that 2,900 to around 5,000, 5,500 per parcel. We looked at the different, all, all five firms came in with different approximations, but it was a relatively tight timeframe, or range from that, basically 3,000 to 5,500.
Comparatively, from previous similar types of projects?
Yeah, well, usually, on average, we anticipate around 5,000.
Per parcel.
Per parcel.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. This is maybe in continuation from the mayor's question as well, because I just sparked. So the real estate fees that we're paying this provider is $2,990 per parcel.
Yes.
And then on average, for all the parcels and all the tracks to be acquired, we look at spending 40,000.
Yes, the tracks to be acquired are temporary construction easements, and so there will not be a permanent taking. It's just the right to be able to utilize that person's property while we make improvements within the right-of-way.
So we don't plan on any of personal, or any of the property actually be taken long-term just for...
Correct. It's just during the interim.
And do you know when this construction would start for Douglas between Seneca and Meridian?
Logistically, the earliest it could start is January of 2026.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Dalton Glasscock, do you want to do both 3B and 8?
Yeah, Motion to Approve 3B and Item 8 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Hoheisel asks for Number 6.
I appreciate it, Mayor. Susie? Just one quick question here pertaining to some of the lease things here, lease agreements.
Good mornings. Susie Santo, 515 South Main, with Visit Wichita.
Good morning, Susie. Page 12 of your, I guess this is, will be received and filed, but your independent auditor, it talks about the operating leases. It says the Bureau has a lease for office space that was renewed in '24 and expires in '32. You have to pay all the extra costs there. Termination of the lease is generally prohibited unless there is a violation under the lease agreement. So does this mean you guys are pretty much locked into your current space until 2032?
It, it does.
Okay.
And I'm glad you asked about that. Our, our rent, as you can see in that, we, our base rent is $95,000 a year. And that actually has only gone up 2% since 2012. And then when you look at all of the common area maintenance, the property tax, all of the, that also goes into utilities, we pay 207,000 total, which is reflected in the audit.
Okay, and then I also see the operating leases. It goes up, and it kind of plateaus at 217, 347. Then there's a slight dip in 2029. Is there any reason for that little slight $4,000 dip there?
You know what? I'd have to go back and get more information for you on that.
Okay, I just thought it was curious when I was looking at it. That's all.
I'd have to go back and look. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Any further questions for staff or for Visit Wichita? Susie, before you leave, just really quickly, just so that the community understands, when did you guys move to this location? And are you the anchor location or anchor tenant for that location?
We are. Visit Wichita moved there in 2008. That was before I was there, but previously, I believe they were down on Douglas. They moved there in 2008 when Waterwalk opened. And we are the tenant with a prime, prime location for visitors to find us right off of Main Street.
I know that this has been asked previously, and I don't know if you've answered this during a public meeting, but have there been other spaces that you guys have looked at prior to signing the renewal of the space?
We have. This last year, we looked at spaces because our contract actually expired. And so we spent about, you know, the previous year, we'd identified it with the Executive Committee. We need to look and make sure that it met our needs from spaces, and it met the visitor needs. And we did look elsewhere, but realized financially, we are better stewards of the dollars staying put.
And the $95,000 per year for this lease, who, majority of that, that lease, who pays for it?
You know, that comes out of the transient guest tax. And I think it's important to note that this, we use the transient guest tax and the T-bid. These are dollars that come into our, our community through visitors. So visitors are staying in the hotels. We use those dollars that visitors leave here to drive future visitors. So that comes through the transient guest tax.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff or Visit Wichita? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Mayor Wu and City Council members. And thank you. I appreciate that, at my request, you pulled this item from the consent agenda. I appreciate that transparency and openness and giving us a chance to speak. And I see that as a huge improvement. So I'll start there by saying thank you. I'm Celestrusat, 2239 North Teetime Court. I was a former Chief Internal Auditor and FDIC Bank Examiner. So I love to look at financial statements, and I do that with a pretty sharp eye. With our budget process just beginning, it is common knowledge that the city of Wichita is facing a financial shortfall. The city needs to find ways to cut expenses or find efficiencies in spending. Taxpayers will soon be given a survey to determine where they think their tax dollars should be spent. Why isn't tourism expense part of this survey? Each year, taxpayers give $7 million in tax revenues through the T-bid and the transient guest tax to a third-party, Visit Wichita, for tourism services. Put this in the survey. Visit Wichita finances are concerning, and I have voiced these concerns to you right here in city council meetings for the past five years, but nothing has changed. If we keep doing what we have been doing, how will we know if there is a better way or a better vendor? First, what does a third-party vendor do? It's tourism. We give up $7 million in tax revenues for Visit Wichita to spend on tourism. But is Visit Wichita the best bang for our buck? When was the last time a Request for Proposal was created to bid for this tourism business? They have had our tourism business since 2014, over 10 years, and not once have we bid that out to another competitor. In 2014, the idea was they would increase hotel occupancy beyond 60%. Guess where it is now? 61%.[1790.74] And yet they get $6 to $7 million in the transient guest tax and the T-bid every year. And why did they stop tracking website views and online advertising impressions? This used to be a metric. The new platform taxpayers paid for in 2017 was supposed to make a better targeting platform, and now there is no way to see how that is performing. Second, why are they building up such a huge cash and investment balance? The cash accounts were noted by the external auditor as exceeding federally insured limits by over $300,000. Wow, I wish I had that kind of money in my bank account. If taxpayers are being asked to tighten their belts, why is Visit Wichita sitting on a $3 million investment in cash and investments to spend as they please? And who gave them permission to sign a 10-year lease in Waterwalk? Waterwalk is one of the biggest failed development projects in Wichita's history, and yet they signed a 10-year lease costing us $1.3 million in prepaid lease expenses. Waterwalk's failed development, guess what they pay in rent to the city of Wichita? A dollar a year for 99 years. Why are we subsidizing a failed development by renting office space in Waterwalk? We have a beautiful iconic architectural showpiece in the former public library, which is sitting empty, where our tourism center could move into, and I didn't hear her mention looking at the public library as an example of office space. That would save us 200,000 per year in rent. Move the Old Town Police Headquarters also into the former library, and that saves us another $60,000 a year. Second chance, I just heard this week, is looking for office space to hold their meetings. They could also go in the mezzanine level of the old former public library. Rent out the main floor for receptions and events, and you know what? An empty building could start generating income. Third, why not combine tourism between the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County, like is done with park reservations? How much does Sedgwick County spend on tourism? Online advertising, website and staff? I bet Sedgwick County doesn't give their tourism CEO $350,000 in salary. That's more than the city manager makes, more than Wichita's chief of police, and more than WSU School of Business dean. I say combine this activity. Fourth, fare filled in as part of the failed Waterwalk development. This developer's hotel was built using taxpayer money. The outstanding bond debt totals $4 million. What is the city's plan for paying this off? There is a $2 million balloon payment coming due in eight years. The amount of transient guest tax we spend on this bond debt every year could also pay for utilities at the former public library. This is an example of how taxpayer money was scraped off for debt for a private hotel and yet was labeled stormwater utilities when it was booked. The budget survey needs to give taxpayers a chance to really see the expenses the city pays, starting with Visit Wichita. Thank you so much. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Celeste. I have questions for the city manager that Celeste brought up. First and foremost, I know that Celeste has brought this up multiple times regarding the public library. City manager, can you just give the community a little bit of history regarding the public library? When the new public library was conceived, what was the conversation about what was going to happen with the old public library?
Mayor, thank you for the question. At the time that the decision, the business decision was made to build a new library, there was not a discussion about a specific use for the old library. And the discussion was that we would look for some type of appropriate community use if possible, but we also knew that it could be an important piece of a redevelopment project for the, excuse me, for the C2 and Bob Brown complex. And we've had a few planning efforts, the most recently done by Populace, that showed this being an important part of redevelopment of that area and actually serving a purpose for community functions and, and support for the convention center. So the idea is that we would have a public use of that building at some point.
Just as a reminder, a couple of months ago, so during my first State of the City address, I had it at the former central library. And it's, the building itself is being used. I think United Way used it for tax purposes. So have there been other discussions of how to reuse that building as it is still a taxpayer-funded building? And what are other purposes that it could be used for?
We've actually had a request for proposals out. Actually, I think we may have gone out twice. We did have some nonprofit groups submit proposals on the reuse of the building. When we discussed with them the details of those proposals, they asked that the building be brought up to date before they move into it, and they asked for help with operations as well, and that did not seem to be a feasible approach. We did an initial review of using it as venue space with ASM. They asked that the building be fully renovated before they would move into it. We are now in discussions with them about the possibility of lesser plan, where maybe the first floor would be used and we could put in fewer improvements that are necessary. I will remind you that when we looked at this building recently for the possible use of office space and space for, excuse me, devoted to police operations, the price tag for that, just for the building remodel itself, was $17.2 million. So if we were to move some operations such as Visit Wichita in there and waive rent, we would still be required to invest somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 17 million dollars just to be able to get them in the building. So it's really, we need to find a more viable use, and we're really hoping that, working with ASM, we'll have an interim use and one that will lead to maybe a permanent use as we go forward with any improvements at Bob Brown and C2.
Has that building been thought of as possibly a cultural arts building? So have it as event space that could generate revenue, but also provide space for other entities such as Visit Wichita?
Mayor, thank you for the reminder. Yes, we did talk to one cultural institution specifically about having a presence in that building. They came back with the exact same concern, and that is that they couldn't move their whole operation there, and it was not cost-effective for them to move a portion of their operation into that building, as much as they would like to have a downtown presence.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I'd definitely like to see that building kind of stay available for any type of East Bank Riverfront improvements in the future. I think that could be key to that. Two, I just want to thank Susie and her team for the great work that they do and seeing all of the awesome opportunities come to our community, and I know that you all are a part of that. Still think we should get council members to play in some of these sporting tournaments, but we'll see, we'll keep a hopeful heart for that. But just thank you again for all the work that you're doing. I see that the investments that you are making and the opportunities to come to Wichita are paying off. Thank you.
And last question is either for city manager or someone from finance. Can you please provide the exact amounts for the transient guest tax that's generated, specifically maybe the, the T-bid portion?
Hi, Lindsay Benaka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services. Could you rephrase the question or restate it?
Can you please let us know how much in transient guest taxes are collected? If you have the 24 numbers, just so that people have an idea of exactly how much we're talking about?
To go towards Visit Wichita or total transient guest tax?
Total, and then how much goes to Visit Wichita?
Okay, I can look into that and can follow up after this meeting for it. And then I, we do have T-bid coming up later in the agenda, but we'll talk about that specific budget line.
Mayor, the T-bid amount's $3.9 million.
The transient guest tax, you'll figure out how much actually is generated, the total amount, and how much is allocated to Visit Wichita so that it can be provided for all?
Yeah, and for fiscal year '24 is what you're requesting?
Yes.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I motion, I move that we receive and file the, the report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Hoheisel, consent agenda item number 11.
All right, this one's, I believe, for Sally. And I know we're going to be talking about this later on as well, but I did have some questions here because it deals with the Lytech credits, which I guess the 4% are now done on the state level.
First round, there's a second round of 4% coming later this year.
I mean, going forward next year.
No, actually, the 4% and 9%, those are both federal tax credits. Now, the state, it's starting in 2022, married state tax credits layered them on top, that part of it's going away, but the 4% and 9% will continue going forward.
On the federal, so we'll still be eligible for those.
Correct.
Okay, so whenever we, we do propose these, is it the same kind of the other support mechanisms here that will also help us in our application for the federal ones as well?
Correct. Those points apply to the application both on federal and state, because they do, right now, they're combined. There are additional points for waiving fees as well as local government support of projects. And so there are five projects that are in this round for 9%. And we really hope that one or more of them actually gets awarded this year.
Yeah, fingers crossed here as well.
Yeah, four would be the max that could possibly happen based on the regulations in the qualified allocation plan, that it's no more than three per county with, there's a bonus project, so it could go to four. That's really unheard of.
Okay, so are we, are we, do we have a way that we can expedite this or streamline this to where all of these extra things, the land donation from the local government? I think we're kind of, have our hands tied. Our land bank doesn't necessarily operate the way we, we hope, we had hoped it had. But the historic tax credits, the sales tax exemption and the fee waiver, are we figuring out a way to streamline that process to make it, so that way any of the low-income projects are just a little more appealing for the people who are, who are judging it?
Who are judging them. Yeah, we try and make sure that the projects that developers come to us, they inquire about, for example, sales tax exemption, property tax exemption, that goes through the Office of Economic Development. There's also additional points for low-interest loans by local government, and that's those two items coming later on, home funds to be allocated to projects. We do try and maximum, work with, with developers to make sure that their projects maximize points.
Okay, and we do it on like a project-by-project basis? We look at each one and see?
Correct. And, and you know, projects are very different. For example, last year's Timbers project did not need home funds because they had another local, low-interest local loan, grant, actually it was, excuse me. And so they didn't need them last year. So we're not going to say, hey, take our money. If you don't need it, don't take our money. But we work collaboratively to try and see, make sure that wherever there's available points, hopefully we can help them get them in the application process.
Okay, weird question here. So if they did take our, and I realize they were awarded, but if they did take our money, that, would that still increase their, their potential for selection?
It does, because there are additional points for, not, having two sources doesn't give them more points. So they already had the, it was actually a HUD grant that came through the state, Timbers did last year. So they, and their project didn't need the additional funding because the, they had layered the state tax credit on top of the federal tax credit. They didn't have gap to fill. So they didn't even ask for any home funds for that purpose because they already maximized the score in that category and didn't need the additional funding. So we look at these on a project-by-project basis.
Okay, and one, one final question. The president released his budget recently.
Yes.
Were Lytech credits, were those on the chopping block in his budget?
They have not been addressed yet because tax credits actually come through Section 42 of federal code, which is the IRS side. What was proposed and, and put out, we haven't seen any, any of the breakdown outside of what's come from HUD yet, but we're still looking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 5, 2025.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, May 5, for the following items. For engineering, we have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer to serve South Seneca State's addition, reject all bids. We have the construction of concrete trail, ADA dock and parking lot at Chisholm Creek Park North for Prado Construction LLC for an aggregate bid total of $532,705.10. We have the river corridor improvement, West Bank Maple to Douglas for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated for $6,806,329.75. We have the Holyoke water main replacement for Barclay Construction LLC for $447,600. We have the filter fly control chemicals awarded at the bid opening of May 2 by Coin Flip for RIN Tokil North American Incorporated doing business as Target Specialty Products for $1,713 a case. We have the glass beads for traffic line paint for Potter's Industries LLC for 55 cents per pound with an estimated annual usage of $49,860. We have the furnish and install of new furniture for Carl G. Brewer Community Center for John A. Marshall Company for $221,146.92. We have the 31,000 gross vehicle weight restriction cab and chassis with 14-foot dumping lift, bed, chipper, truck for Omaha Truck Center doing business as Truck Center Companies for an aggregate bid total of $242,416. We have the polymers for use in the wastewater solids dewatering facility for Polydine Incorporated for the chemical rates listed for an estimated annual usage of $902,251.80. We have liquid chlorine bulk delivery for Brin Tag Southwest Incorporated for an estimated annual usage of $3,078,000. We have the bulldozer undercarriage track assembly repair for Foley Industries Incorporated for $85,286.44. We have the Cisco catalyst switches for Heartland Business Systems LLC for $93,199.53. We have the upgrade to manage relay interactive voice response for Selectron Technologies Incorporated for an estimated five-year total of $231,507.39. We have the chemical rehabilitation of Wells contract change order for Lane Kristen Company for an amended amount of $1,099,397.25 per year. We have the Ops, Ops Audit, excuse me, Essentials auditing software as a service subscription contract change order for Audit Board Incorporated for an amended annual amount of $36,104 per year, authorizing a 5% annual escalation in 2026 and 2027. We have the private lot cleanup contract change order for HD Mills and Sons Incorporated and TNG Mowing and Excavating Incorporated, requesting authorization to extend the contract 90 days. For airport, we have the HVAC equipment replacement of 2163 Air Cargo and 7710 Southwest Boulevard for Don Vaughn Incorporated for $360,000. And we have the HVAC equipment replacement at 1801 Airport Road, 1761 Airport Road and Airport Parking Garage for Dean E. Norris Incorporated for $1,285,413. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of small business resource partner events. We'll be hosting two upcoming for the city. Is there open public opportunities out on the street today? And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions and recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. We'll begin with Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, could you go back to slide seven, please?
Sure.
I know I ask these questions a lot, but just curious on a $6 million bid, why there was no other bids or if you know why?
Yeah, so I'll be candid with you. We don't really ever know what the market is. Yeah, um, so I'll be candid with you, we, we don't really ever know what the market is doing. We try, we try to predict it, we try to understand it, but we never do know definitively. But we, on this specific project, notified four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven contacts with the commodity codes that could do this service. Uh, we reached out to a prominent vendor who communicated, um, honestly, our own projects with the B and R tying them up. So really having to do with the availability of labor and general contractors in the area. And the, and the inflow of federal money, I think, is impacting that nationwide.
That's incredible. Um, okay, thank you. Um, and, um, the next slide on page eight. Um, just noticing that the winning bid is, you know, almost half of what one of the other bids is. I just, is it labor? Is it, I mean, that's a huge, significant difference.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Not that you have all the answers, I just, that's kind of crazy.
I try and, I try and think about it.
Well, I appreciate it.
Um, yeah, so this one was actually one that we worked with our department, our requesting department. Barclay Construction is a new vendor to this type of work. They explicitly stated, we are aggressively pricing this, trying to grow our portfolio. We reviewed the qualifications, we reviewed the vendor. I couldn't see any issue to, to say that they wouldn't be qualified and, and I would not support rejecting them.
Awesome. I appreciate that, uh, you know, new companies are, are applying and wanting to do, uh, work with the city. So, um, I'm totally supportive, just kind of asking questions that maybe make somebody wonder what is going on. So appreciate, um, all of your information.
Absolutely, anytime, uh, any of the council has questions on these items, that, this is, um, your purchases as a council. So anytime that you have a specific item you want to poll, question or call, um, we welcome that.
Thank you, Josh. I see no further questions for you. I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts for May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Paul Gunsmen, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, I have some new and revised petitions for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent one hundred percent of the improvement districts and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Abilene Place Edition, located in District Four, the project will provide water improvements and paving improvements, uh, for new residential development. Pier Point Acres, second addition, located in District Six. Project will provide water, sanitary sewer and paving improvements required for a new residential development. Oak Tree Edition, located in District Four. Project will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer and paving improvements, again, for a new residential development. Revised petitions, Abilene Place Edition, located in District Four. On May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the City Council approved water, sanitary sewer and paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to meet current market conditions. And Bridger at Central, located in District Five. On April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the City Council approved paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer has submitted revised petition with a revised budget to meet current market conditions. With that, it is recommended that the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff? I just have one, Paul, really quick. Um, I saw, is it new developments in Districts Four, Five and Six?
Yes.
Is that right for this go-around? And just as a reminder for community, these are all paid for by specials, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. I move to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing in request by seven twenty-one West Maple LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue multifamily residential revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. We received an application from seven twenty-one West Maple. Uh, they are a, uh, sort of newly formed Kansas limited liability company specifically for the development and construction of thirty-six new multifamily residential units, eighteen of which are anticipated to be one-bedroom, the other eighteen two-bedroom apartments, uh, located in the downtown Delano area, uh, to try and attract young professionals, new families, students and retirees, uh, looking for more modern downtown living options. Uh, the request is the issuance of approximately six million dollars in revenue bonds to finance the project. Uh, this is an illustration, artistic rendering of one of the three buildings, uh, that are being proposed. Here's another illustration. So according to the city's economic development guidelines, project qualifies for a seventy-five percent property tax abatement. That's based on a cap, new capital investment between five and ten million dollars, garners a fifty percent tax abatement. And then locating that project in a redevelopment area also adds an additional twenty-five percent abatement for a total seventy-five percent property tax abatement. Uh, the estimated value of the seventy-five percent abatement for the full fir, first full year is approximately forty-three thousand dollars, um, with, uh, city's contribution of that or, or share of that being about thirteen thousand, county share about eleven thousand, state about six hundred dollars and two-five-nine about seventeen thousand. Uh, the project is also eligible as a result for sales tax exemption, uh, based on that six million dollar capital investment. The approximate value of the sales tax exemption is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, with the city share being approximately seventeen thousand, four hundred. Uh, so in accordance with state law, for any revenue bond that contemplates a, uh, property tax abatement, we have to do a cost benefit analysis. So a cost benefit analysis was performed and the following ratios, uh, resulted from that with City of Wichita cost benefit one point four seven to one, uh, county one point three nine to one, two-five-nine, one point nine five to one, and then the state three point one five to one. So we share this disclaimer. Revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption and property tax and/or property tax abatement. In a revenue bond transaction, city is not lending any money, bears no risk, company is required to acquire all of its own financing. There are no taxpayer dollars at risk when it comes to revenue bonds. All costs are borne by the company requesting the use of the bonds. The company agrees to pay all costs of issuing the bond, agrees to pay all annual origination fees. Ultimately, the bonds will be purchased by seven twenty-one West Maple or a related entity. At this point, bond documents required for the issuance of the bonds, once the project are complete, will be prepared by outside bond counsel, but ultimately Law Department will review and approve the final form. It's recommended the City Council adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures today. We do have a representative from the applicant here to answer any questions you might have, and otherwise I'll just stand for questions.
Detroit, questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question, what is the current tax on, uh, the open parcel? It's open land right now. You know what they're currently paying in property tax?
Give me, if you can give me two seconds, I can, but it, it's vacant undeveloped land. I want to say the tax obligation was a couple hundred dollars a year. I mean, I can get you the exact number, but because it's vacant undeveloped ground, there's very little tax.
So with the seventy-five percent payment, they're still paying the current property tax levy?
Correct, land is not abated. Correct, land is not abated, it's all the new improvements that are associated. And again, it's just, it's sort of our best sort of calculated guess. We, we don't know exactly what the county assessor is going to appraise the property at. So what we do is we look at comps for similar projects in and around the area to try and give ourselves kind of a, a yardstick to, to project what we anticipate that's going to be. But until we know what the county appraises the property at, well, we know for sure.
But with the seventy-five percent abatement, they're still paying the existing levy?
Correct, plus that additional twenty-five percent. Yep.
Thank you.
Can you get the actual amount, please? Because I believe that there's a shed there right now, so I don't believe that's completely vacant. Therefore, it can't be a couple hundred dollars.
I'd have to defer to the applicant on whether or not there are any improvements on the property.
While you're looking that up, I also want to make sure that the community knows that the document that was submitted to us on Friday, uh, has different numbers than the one that we received this morning. So I'm sure that that will be updated on the agenda packet for the community.
So the applicant was gracious to share, um, the annual taxes today are about twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Any further questions for staff? I know that, uh, we're always looking for more housing, that is the biggest, uh, topic that this community wants us, whether it's, as we just heard from boards and bid, uh, we want housing everywhere. And this is particularly just south of the baseball, south and west of the baseball stadium. And it is an empty slash small lot that also includes a shed that will be removed, uh, and moved somewhere else. Uh, so again, housing is critical for our community and we appreciate that people are thinking about housing within the downtown core where there are going to be, uh, more individuals. I'm going to ask the applicant a couple of questions. Can you tell us the rents for these, uh, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, please?
Yeah, uh, that'd be about average fifteen hundred dollars a month. So one-bedroom would be about twelve hundred, twelve fifty, and two-bedroom would be seventeen hundred, seventeen fifty.
Is that comparable to what's in that area?
Excuse me, uh, it's lower than, uh, the bulk of the area, um, but well, obviously be higher than some of the older, um, stuff that's on the market.
And can you also address, um, this has, uh, a look that can be replicated elsewhere. Uh, what is the intention of the developer in terms of housing, not just in this area?
Sure, so our goal is to, um, have proof of concept a, at this location. It's intentionally designed that we could take one of these buildings and it'll fit on a traditional old-fashioned city lot just about anywhere. Um, so the idea would be, um, and when you saw in the pictures, it was a rectangular building. Um, so we could take it somewhere else and roughly the design stays the same. We can put a different, um, skin on it to fit the, the area, uh, of where we're looking. But we could take it and, uh, go across the city and do these, uh, just about anywhere.
And can you address, because I have seen many city, uh, documents that design fees are very expensive. And so, uh, can you talk about how this will be helpful in reproducing, uh, so that we can get more housing?
Sure, so, uh, design fees on this, uh, round number, roughly a quarter million dollars, um, for design and engineering, uh, services. And so when we take the same, uh, drawings, what we do is we do a site adaptation when we go somewhere else. So we don't have to fully redesign it. So there's a significantly, uh, smaller amount of design and engineering fees because we'll use the same floor plans and just adapt them to the sites. So it helps us save on the next ones.
One more question, um, I know that this is three stories. Um, I've had individuals in the community ask, why can it not be four stories, other buildings around the community? Can you just address, um, would four stories be helpful? Could that change? Could that also not only add more units, but also, uh, be helpful with the design?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. Uh, so for this site and, and where we are, we couldn't go four stories unless we added a second set of stairs for every building and an elevator for each building. Uh, and so local code restrictions currently only allow this type of building with one set of stairs to be three stories and no more than four units per floor. Uh, and so, uh, round numbers, it adds half a million dollars to each building to go additional, um, additional floors or additional stories.
Could, is this something that is of interest to, uh, the developer in regards to possibly adding an additional floor if the restriction wasn't there?
Absolutely, where, uh, as we look at additional sites, especially in the downtown core, um, just, uh, the, the other buildings around, it wouldn't look out of place to be four or five stories tall. Uh, and when we look at it, we don't have to acquire more land, uh, when we add more floors. And so our cost per unit goes down as we add additional floors, um, which allows us to bring, um, down our rents and, and bring, uh, housing cheaper to market, um, by adding more floors on the same building.
And can you also address, because, um, the materials that you're looking at for building this structure have, have come up to standards. And so would adding that additional floor but not having an additional staircase or the addition of an elevator be a problem?
Sure, so from our perspective and our opinion is that, um, when the codes were originally written, our buildings weren't nearly as safe as they are today. So these apartments will be fully sprinkled, uh, so there'll be fire sprinkler throughout the building. The exit stair walls are pressurized, uh, and so adding additional floors, in our opinion, is a very low safety risk because of the, the nature of the materials, which are all, um, not fire retardant but fireproof. Uh, and then also the fire sprinklers, they're incredibly safe buildings, uh, and so absolutely, we'd, we'd look to add additional floors if we could.
We need more density, and I know that that is, um, one of the critical pieces is how do you build so that it's economical for the developer, but also for the renter, him or herself, as they, um, are wanting, uh, more, uh, housing that is affordable to them? My question now will be to staff, have we, um, had any conversations about how to change code so that a fourth floor would not have the additional barrier of an additional staircase or the need of an elevator?
So there's a number of various code sections that we're constantly, uh, examining, right? We recently, uh, explored a, uh, an electrical conduit requirement that, uh, was adding additional cost to a, a large multifamily residential project. Um, it was a local amendment, uh, and through the work with M A B C D, we, we, uh, struck that requirement from the code, making it, again, more affordable to build dense multifamily residential, particularly in our urban core. Uh, and so we're constantly looking at those options. As it specifically relates to this one, I don't know what conversations M A B C D has had specifically in regards to, uh, additional, um, local stairways and elevator requirements and those kind of things, but those are absolutely conversations that we're willing to have, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a question for the developer, how many lots are included in this? Cause I see, I see that the taxes on the lot listed are only three hundred and fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Yeah, that's, uh, so the lots, there's one, two, three, there's six lots included, it's broken up.
The total is twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah, uh, uh, roughly twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions for staff or to the developer. We will now open it up for public comment.
My name's Cortland Redding, I'm resident in, uh, uh, Councilmember Johnson's district, District One, at sixty thirty-eight, uh, Rockwood Drive in Wichita. Um, my question in regards to, um, any new apartment developments and specifically, uh, within the city itself is, uh, what are the parking restrictions going to be on those developments? Um, how is that going to be allocated percentage-wise? For example, is a one-bedroom, one-unit going to have a one-to-one ratio for parking available? Or is that expectation going to be street parkings going to be available, um, due to the public transit, um, situation? Where I've lived in, uh, different cities, uh, throughout the United States, that's typically addressed, um, with new, um, vertical developments. Question number two, um, for the developer itself. number two for the developer itself is, will those fire suppression systems be wet or dry? Dry systems may require fire departments to pressurize them in order to be able to suppress any fires. If the city considers raising the building itself any additional height, I would have concerns that the escape of the tenants themselves would be a value. And living in cities where those systems went into play later on, some of those escape ladders and systems are a little bit more derelict. And how will the city go upon monitoring and surveilling any exemptions that are placed to the current building codes and enough themselves? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Cortland, Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. This probably a question for Troy or somebody in planning. This came before my dab yesterday in terms of rezoning, for this to be a Central Business District rezoning in part about the parking question. Could you offer context to that?
Yeah, so I can speak and we do have our, I do not see our planning director, so I'll just speak off the cuff a little bit. I know in Central Business District, parking is not required. With that being said, the developer does plan on providing one space per unit, per bed, based on just market demands. Oftentimes, we find that a lot of the parking that is generated with projects such as this are really market-driven, not necessarily sort of city code required. More specifically, again, CBD zoning does not require parking be associated with it. But there is a parking plan. There is a parking lot that will be planned directly behind these three buildings to support the residential units.
Thank you. So Cortland, you can go back. I, I don't know if it was in our consent agenda packet right now off the top of my head. But if you look at the dab from District Four yesterday, you can see part of the agenda packet is a parking plan for this application. In addition, Troy, sorry to get you up and down and up and down. Another reason for the Central Business District zoning was the setback, correct?
Correct.
So this could be a budding Maple Street closer to the stadium?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the question about fire suppressant to the applicant, is it wet or dry fire suppression?
Sure. So 95% of it's wet with the, we have to have fire sprinkler heads to protect the balconies and those are dry. The rest of it's a wet system.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I see no further comments. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank the developer for taking a risk on doing business and also for investing in multifamily housing, especially in the downtown core. I'm incredibly supportive of this. I hope this is replicable in other parts of the community as well. I know I met with other developers that are working on actually similar programs independent of each other. And so I'll be very supportive of this. Seeing that no one else is on the board, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing and request by WAM 4200 LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, again Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. We're actually going to forego a presentation just in the interest of time. We're actually recommending that this item get deferred to May 13th, 2025 City Council meeting. We've been in conversation with the owner developer. The progress, the project is evolving. And so this will give us another week to really flush out exactly what that looks like. With that being said, this, this item, there was a public hearing that was advertised for today. So there may be folks that were coming out today to, to, to speak either for or against the project. And so our recommendation for you today is to open that public hearing, receive public comment, and then defer consideration of the item to the next regular scheduled meeting on May 13th, 2025. And with that being said, I'll stand for questions.
I see no questions for staff. And since we're delaying, Councilmember Glasscock?
I, I think based on Troy's recommendation is that we would still open public comment and then I would have a subsequent motion.
Very good. We'll close staff questioning. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll continue with public comment. However, a deferral. Councilmember Glasscock.
Now that we opened public comment, Mayor, I have a motion to defer the, this item to May 13th.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing on proposed assessments for 25 paving projects, 26 water projects, 21 sewer projects, and 13 storm sewer projects in the September 2025 bond sale series 836.
Good morning again, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities for the record. The item before you this morning is a public hearing on proposed assessments for 85 projects. And as the clerk mentioned, paving, 25 paving projects, 26 water projects, 21 sanitary sewer projects, and 13 storm sewer projects for an estimated total of $24,500,000. A notice of, notice of hearing letters were published February 28th, 2025 for all 85 projects. All affected property owners have been notified in writing. And the Department of Finance and Public Works staff held a virtual information hearing on March 17th, 2025. And we did receive some questions specifically regarding Union Mills, Jabe's Edition, which was a paving project, as well as traffic signal at 21st and Broadmoor. We had received some questions regarding North Ridge Village Edition, as well as Northgate Fifth Edition. And staff were able to effectively answer all questions at that time regarding those projects. Statements of special assessment will be mailed to the property owners on May 16th, 2025, pending City Council approval to date. Property owners have 30 days from the date of the statement to pay the assessment and void paying interest. The assessments not paid during this period will be in the September 2025 bond sale. And the interest added to the principal amount will be determined by the rate at which the bonds sell. The principal and interest will then be spread and placed on the 2026 tax roll. All single-family property assessments within this group of 85 projects will be for a period of 20 years based on the two-year trial approved by City Council on June 7th, 2022. Of the 85 total projects, 36 are single-family or mixture of single-family, multifamily zoning and will be assessed over a 20-year period. The remaining 49 projects are either multifamily or commercial zoning and will be assessed over a 15-year period. It is recommended to close a public hearing, approve the proposed assessments, and place the ordinance on first reading. And I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the proposed assessments and place the ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Oh, sorry. I move to close the public hearing, approve the proposed assessments, and place the ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Hyatt Funds reallocation.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Background, on September 5th, 2017, the City Council adopted ordinance number 50-585 of the City Code, which authorized the use of Hyatt Regency Wichita sale proceeds to fund projects in Council Districts 1 through 5. Subsequent ordinances have authorized additional projects and allocations. District One's allocation of funds have not been fully utilized. This request is to amend the most recent Hyatt sale proceeds ordinance, ordinance number 51925, adopted in August 16th, 2022. Reallocations will not exceed the original $1 million. The proposed projects, unutilized funds totaling $73,450 from District One Hyatt Initiatives will be reallocated to the Park and Recreation Department to support two funding components that expand equitable access to youth recreational opportunities in District One, $72,424.38 from District One Neighborhood Grant Program, and $1,026 from District One Recreational Services. Project One is youth football scholarships. A contribution of $49,450 will be allocated to support participation in youth football. Scholarships available for 430 City of Wichita residents. This covers full registration and uniform cost. Families will pay a $25 fee credited toward equipment or supplies to encourage commitment and reduce city costs. Scholarships awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. For Project Two, free swim days at McAfee Pool, a $24,000 contribution will provide free admission to McAfee Pool for individuals age 17 and under on 11, 11 consecutive Saturdays in 2025 and five alternating Saturdays in 2026. Pool is open from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. each Saturday with an extra hour calculated to costs for opening and closing procedures. Staffing is estimated at $250 per hour, resulting in $1,500 per day and a total of $24,000 for the two seasons. It is recommended that the City Council place the ordinance on a first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Cameron. Any questions for staff?
I just had a couple of quick questions, maybe not for Cameron. I know I asked this question during Friday's agenda review regarding the Hyatt funds. This is specific to District One funds that are still available. Can you please address if there are any other districts that still have remaining balances? This was a million dollars per district. Is that correct, City Manager?
Mayor, that is correct, as well as $10 million for street maintenance, $4 million for transit. Those were the original allocations, along with $6 million to the, each of the, to the council districts combined. There are small dollars available in, in some of the districts. There's about $8200 left in District One after this reallocation, plus about just shy of $40,000 in program income that's coming from the Propel loans that were made in District One. And so that money can be reprogrammed possibly into business loans if that's the desire of the council member. There's a very small amount in District Two left over from a park improvement project. There is approximately $19,000 available in District Three for redistribution. And Councilmember Holheisel, I think, mentioned that a little bit during the last, during the agenda review, may want to elaborate. Plus, there's about $62,000 in program income coming from a loan to the Starlight Theater that is also available for reprogramming. Small amount of money left over from the Ponty Prairie Park project in District Four. And there's about $9,000 left from the Prok Wetlands improvements in District Five. That would summarize where we are in terms of the available funds.
And there's no expiration date for these funds. So it really is up to each of the council members for those districts to talk about how they would like to utilize those funds?
Yes, Mayor. Although there are a few projects that are really small dollar amounts, Harrison Park, $69. What we probably need to do is, is find, is do a cleanup motion at some time in the future, maybe sweep those funds into transit where we know they can be utilized. But they're, they're very small amounts and not enough to fund any specific project.
I would like to see that consolidated so that, again, it can be clean. And right now, really the outstanding dollars are, the most of those dollars are in District One and District Three. So those council members really have more leeway. I know that the question was asked, why could, could the proposal not be citywide? Well, each of these council members and their predecessors were given an opportunity to allocate dollars for their district. And each of the council members chose different things to fund. I really appreciate District One in that it's an ongoing fund. And that's why there's always going to be dollars in there. Could Councilmember Johnson just address that so that folks understand the Propel program and how that does provide an ongoing basis of funds?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Propel, I was going to speak to that. I'd love to see all the revenues from that continue to get programmed back into Propel in perpetuity. It is an opportunity to kind of reach the gaps that are faced in the community, offering very low-interest loans, 3% loans for up to $20,000 for small businesses targeted toward women-owned and minority-owned businesses, but open to anyone. But really trying to reach those gaps to really get business going. You know, Wichita is a great city, a great place to really invest in your American dream. But sometimes there are blockades to access the capital that people face. And Propel is one of those opportunities to get around that. One of the first investments of Propel, that business is still open. It was a shop on Douglas that you can still go do pictures and stuff. It was a success story. I think we were going to do a video about her and what she's doing there. But Propel has been a breath of fresh air for so many people. And again, kind of putting that gap in access to capital. This is a way to fill it. Great partnership with Create Campaign and Christina Long. I was just pushing yes and no, but her brilliance and working with our staff and creating a program like that and really just seeing how successful it's been. So excited to see that it's working. Hopeful to see it continue to work going forward in the future and seeing more people get a little bit of help to get their business going in Wichita.
You very much, Councilmember Johnson. I just, again, wanted to remind the community that each of the council members, whether sitting on this bench or their predecessors, chose what to do with those funds. And in District Six, Evergreen Building got those dollars. In District Five, the Prok Wetlands. In District Four, Ponty Prairie Park. In District Three, it's an ongoing basis of what is getting funded. In District Two, it was the Dock Hanger and Harrison Park. And in District One, as you just heard Councilmember Johnson discuss, the ongoing funds for the Propel program loans, as well as other programs that are now being considered in this item. So thank you to the predecessors who allocated those $6 million for their districts and how that could help not just their districts, but the city in whole. So thank you. I see no further questions for staff. So I'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Really excited about this allocation of funds, working with Park and Recreation. The neighborhood grant initiative we have was not working in the way that I had hoped or that it did prior to the pandemic. So I wanted to make sure that these funds were used in the best way possible and working with Park and Recs, looking at youth football, as well as continued activation of McAfee Pool. This seemed to be a great opportunity. Saturdays are our busiest days at the pool. So providing a free swim day to community members to be there every Saturday this summer, every other Saturday next summer was awesome. And then, of course, with youth football, being able to get some of those young people safely off of the corners, asking for dollars to pay the registration fees and uniform fees, being able to take care of that, getting quality uniforms and quality equipment will contribute to the safety of the young folks as we continue to work with USD 259 on youth football. So with that, really excited about this. And I would move that the City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Tourism Business Improvement District, 2026 Scope of Services.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilwoman Zippinaka with the City Manager's Office, here to present the Tourism Business Improvement District Scope of Services for next fiscal year, also affectionately known as the T-Bid Board. A little bit of background, Visit Wichita annually receives funding from the City of Wichita for promotion of tourism and convention activities. In 2014, the T-Bid was created to provide additional funding to promote tourism. And for just some additional scope, the, the T-Bid bounty And for just some additional scope, the, the T-Bid boundaries are the, the legal city limits of the City of Wichita. Funding has experienced limited growth in recent years, while competition for tourism and conventions has intensified. The twenty-twenty-six scope of services and budget outlines strategies and budget allocations for leisure marketing and group sales activities to drive tourism to Wichita. Visit Wichita is helping lead local marketing efforts, critical to maintaining and growing Wichita's travel industry and providing dollars to the local economy. And with that, I'll turn it over to Susie Santo, President and CEO of Visit Wichita.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Susie Santo is Visit Wichita, five-one-five, South Main Street. As you can see on the screen, that's a five-year history of the T-Bid. And when you look at the revenue, just to remind, that, again, is paid by visitors who stay in the Wichita hotels. When they check out, there's a tourism fee, and that's where those dollars come from. We had our best year last year with economic impact over two-hundred-and-sixty-three million dollars. When I was before you in December, I talked about the group return on investment for every dollar spent drove fourteen-seventy. And since then, we have the results back from our leisure campaign. So last year, every dollar we spent on that leisure advertising drove a hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents in direct spending into the Wichita area. Before you, you have our twenty-six proposed budget. We're looking at an estimated revenue collection of three-point-nine million. It's important to note that we only spend what's collected. So if those dollars don't come in, there's no advancement of loans. When those dollars come in and they're remitted to Visit Wichita, then we spend those dollars. As you can see in your pamphlet, how it's broken down between leisure and group and product development and general expenses. Happy to answer any questions at the end if you have any specifics on those items. But as we don't spend money until it comes in, also, if more money or there's an initiative that we don't end up doing and we have at the end of the year, we don't spend those dollars before we go back to the Advisory Council. We present that carry forward, which was last year about three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. And then we discuss how it's best used in that next year, which also is included in your packet. I think it's important to take a moment, and, and I have to, y'all know I love talking about travel and tourism and the impact. But when I was here in December, I got to talk about what's coming. These events would not be able to come to Wichita if it weren't for this funding stream, if it wasn't for the T-Bid. And I have to talk a moment about figure skating that happened in January. If you look up on the screen and you see that couple, that's Chalk and Bates. They won the U.S. Figure Skating National Championship, which is here in Wichita. And I know I saw several of the council members there, so hopefully you all got out and enjoyed it. It was incredible week of skating. They were the champions crowned here in Wichita. And then in the middle, that's Ilya Malinin. He is the quad god, the first man ever to do a quad, and now he routinely do, does six or seven of every performance. But what's fascinating is, and they were here at the end of January, three months or a couple of months later, in March, were world championships in Boston. Chalk and Bates, who here in Wichita won, they won the world champions in pairs. Ilya Malinin, who was here in Wichita, he won the world championships in men. And Alyssa Liu, who was here in Wichita, who had a heck of a short program, was leading going to the final night, didn't win here, she, Amber Glenn won, she won on the national, on the world stage. So it's really cool that we had them first here in Wichita, and then they were crowned world champions, and they are all Olympic contenders for next January. So it makes watching the Olympics even more exciting after we got to see them right here in person. When we look at really some, what this meant, besides just great entertainment for all of the visitors and locals alike, we had, again, working with W S U, they estimate about four million dollars in economic impact for that event. What's really cool to see is we had seventy-one hours of national and global media coverage on NBC, Peacock, and USA. And it was so fun to hear from my colleagues and friends around the country as they tuned in and watched and they got to see Wichita shine on that national stage. Also, it's really cool, I don't know if you saw it, but if not, they came live on the Today Show from Interest Bank Arena. So to be able to have the Today Show and that thirty million plus and also develop that relationship with them for future, to explore future opportunities is priceless. So again, huge economic impact, great partnership. Again, appreciate the city partnering with us to bring over fourteen-hundred sixth graders to the event. But again, this is one of those events that it's, the economic impact is awesome, but it's more of the quality of life for our residents and be able to showcase Wichita. Wouldn't have been possible without these funds. Moving on into a few months later, we just hosted the N A I. Men's Wrestling. Great event. And I have to tell you, we also hosted this year for the first time, Women's Wrestling. And nothing against the men's wrestling, that's great to watch, but I have to tell you, if you haven't seen Women's Wrestling, it is unbelievable. It's fast-paced, literally a match can be over in a minute. It's crazy. It's very different scoring, but we had five hundred athletes here, over three million in economic input for that week. And again, wouldn't have happened without T-Bid. And then hopefully, many of you got out and got to experience March Madness. I tell you what, this is not normal to have rounds one and two and have this type of community engagement and activation around the arena. It was a Final Four atmosphere, wouldn't have been possible without partnerships at the city. So thank you to Parks and Recs because they activated NASCAR Park. And if you remember back in twenty-eighteen when we hosted it, and NASCAR Park hadn't been developed, and it was great to see it, that's what it was developed for, to be that front gate, with that front entrance into the arena, to see all the people out there. But not only that, all of the, the businesses from the Union Station all the way around that activated their spaces. So hopefully y'all got out and walked it. I know I saw the mayor there and others, but it was the atmosphere that was just electrifying. And again, we were able to partner with W S U. and Interest Bank Arena to, to, to bring this event here, again, through the, the T-Bid dollars. I will tell you, we just literally yesterday got back economic impact from W S U. Thank you to A.J., we partnered with Interest Bank Arena. They just completed it, and it's over seven million dollars in economic impact came in in that four-day event. And then I chatted about this when I was here in December, about the T-Becs coming up, but I want to tell a little bit more about it. This is a Travel Bloggers Exchange Summit that's coming to Wichita, October one through four. We partnered with Kansas Tourism to bring this to the state. They will start in Wichita, and they will go out and experience some absolutely incredible partners and attractions throughout Wichita. And I have to show you this slide because right now, we have partnered with fifty-four local partners, community-wide, to create the experience that these travel bloggers are going to have. We're expecting a hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty bloggers plus other industry folks. When they come here, they'll sign up for a tour. And I just got to read some of these fun names and what people are looking forward to when they come. I tell you, this has been an all-hands-on-deck with the team and all of these partners up here. So they'll be able to choose to sign up for it. So how about signing up for Hey Now, You're an All-Star? You'll be out on the river on boats and bikes, then you'll move over to Equity Bank Park. You'll get batting practice and go behind the scenes, and then head out to Chicken and Pickle for a pickleball lesson through a pro. Or there's Blaze, Wichita's Old West Trail. You're going to start at Hat Man Jack and get fitted for a hat. You're going to have a Cesparillo at Cowtown, and then you're going to ride horses out at Diamond Streams Ranch. Let's not forget Air Capital of the World Tour, Kansas Aviation Museum, Nayar, Stearman Field Bar and Grill, Textron, and then Bardier. Straight out of Wichita, you're going to tour Pizza Hut Museum, Dudod Diner, Old Mill Tasty Shop, Spice Merchant, Nifty Nut. List goes on and on. So all of these fun tours, another one we're really proud about is really our, our Native American tour that will be taking place at the All-Indian Center with dance and with the ability to actually make a buffalo stew and learn the importance of all the ingredients. And then finally, our Black Wichita Icons Changemakers and Modern Day Trailblazers. You'll start at TCAM, you'll tour the Hattie McDaniel Birth Site, Historic Dunbar will be at Chester Lewis Park, and even go to the Dock and Speakeasy and hear directly from an individual who was there at, at the, at the counter. And so we are showing all aspects of what make Wichita great, would not be possible without all of the partners up there. One event will be hosted at Equity Bank Park for our V I.P. event. We'll also be opening, hosting opening night at Exploration Place and closing night at the Zoo. So influencers are going to be all over town. After they leave us on the fourth, they'll go out to every corner of the state, and they'll be doing two, three, four, five-day tours to see the rest of Kansas. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have this many content creators, bloggers, talking positively about, positively, positively? You know, they're, they're spreading the good word, about Wichita and all that's happening. I can tell you from a team perspective, even bringing in one or two influencers, the amount of work and planning, and imagine we're bringing in a hundred-plus, once-in-a-lifetime, would not be possible without T-Bid. So I'd just like to give you a couple of examples of how we're putting those good dollars to good use to drive tourism and those dollars into our community. Thank you so much for your support. On behalf of the team back at the office, we really appreciate you allowing us to do what we love every single day. I'll turn it back to Lindsay.
And with that, staff recommends to approve the T-Bid scope of services and budget for twenty-twenty-six. Any questions?
We'll open it up for Councilmember questions, beginning with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Susie. I had a few suggestions or thoughts or questions. So activity-wise, although it's October, I think an activity of them seeing us dunk the council member, and I'll volunteer Councilmember Hoheisel for that, and let me throw like footballs at it to dunk him. Think that would be great. But there were two places on there I didn't see.
Okay.
Stationate barbecue, to show Wichita knows our barbecue. And a historical staple for us, fried rice, but it's cash-only, but it's a great place to take people.
Thank you for those suggestions.
Yes, and it should be open by then, but just looking at how you were doing the museum in Chester Lewis Park, if the Brewer Center's open, that might be great to take them by, just to look historically at who all is from Wichita. So we have our N B A. players, N F L. players, architects, and then, again, honoring our first elected African-American mayor, if it fits.
That's awesome. Those are great suggestions. And, you know, I'm so glad you mentioned the barbecue because part of it, too, is what they're going to be eating all along. And talking to some of the influencers, and we chatted about our barbecue, but when we also chatted about chili and cinnamon rolls, they hit the roof. And so they're excited to experience that. So barbecue, absolutely, and I appreciate your fried rice recommendation.
Yes, just to make sure they know that Wichita barbecue is better than Kansas City.
Okay, we're on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I probably will need a bath early October, but I've seen your aim before, so I, I think we'll have to go outside of council to find somebody to dunk me. Also, just one more suggestion, I believe that first weekend in October is the Firefighter Memorial. It's a real solemn event. It'd be, I believe, that Saturday morning, so that might be something to consider covering as well. So yeah, just another suggestion thrown in there.
That's a great suggestion, and I encourage anyone that has suggestions to please reach out to us because also, what, there's another opportunity, what we're calling T-Bectras. And so all of the things that don't fit in on a tour, we will be writing and explaining about it. So it's a great opportunity on that Sunday morning, or that Saturday morning, to promote this and get folks over there. So I really appreciate it. As you can imagine, so much happening, we, we appreciate the suggestions, so thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great respectful event. They got the bagpipes out there.
Okay.
The fire trucks that block off Broadway, so it's a.
It's a.
And then just one other question. Lindsay, could you also just talk a little bit about what else is paid out of the, the T-Bid?
Out of the T-Bid? I don't believe there's anything that's dedicated towards this.
Okay, so it's just strictly Visit Wichita?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Susie, I'm going to invite you back up. As you mentioned several of the locations, I was reminded that during the time of this group of influencers in Wichita, they actually will be here during Hispanic Heritage Month, which happens to be September fifteenth through October fifteenth. And we have a very rich and vibrant Latino and Hispanic culture. In particular, I would love for them to visit Empower by Twenty-first Market Street. Wichita is very culturally diverse, and one of the things that a lot of folks don't even know about is that we have a very strong Lebanese community. And so I would suggest that one of the ways that you feature that is, whether it's with food or Saint George's, Saint George Orthodox Church, there are ways to celebrate the rich Lebanese culture as well as our Hispanic culture that I think that would be of interest to the influencers.
Thank you for those suggestions. I will take them back to the team, get on it.
And then, last but not least, these are more of economic impact questions. So skating had an economic impact of about four million?
Yes.
N C double A, seven million?
Yes.
And how much was the Women's Wrestling, again?
Women's and men's combined, about three million.
Thank you for the economic impact of more than fourteen million dollars in just these three major events. That is how dollars are maximized, and I do understand the value that you have to advertise this community, not just for visitors, but even also internally, because it is quality of life. I know that many Wichitaans participated, whether going around the N C double A activities in downtown Wichita or actually going to the games. These are things that make Wichita really great, and I appreciate the team at Visit Wichita. And I know that you had several questions before we began during the consent agenda. I would just encourage more dialogue with community members about the value of Visit Wichita, which I do believe is great. You help promote the city, and the City of Wichita appreciates that because we know that when you promote Wichita, there's economic impact that comes into our community with people staying in hotels, buying food, buying gifts, and just being in our community and then sharing that story to other folks, because this is a really great place. And I am so glad that you guys keep promoting our community, and I want more people to come to Wichita.
Mayor, thank you so much for the kind words. I'll pass that on to the team, and we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. One more thing. We don't always highlight, and I'm a nerd, so this is cool to me, I don't know what might be cool to them, but we don't always highlight how awesome McConnell is. Is there any way to connect maybe an air refueling flight or some way to see how proud we are having the Pegasus here?
We've been having internal discussions on that. I don't know where we're netting out, but we agree. It's an incredible asset to the community, so I'll, I'll circle back with you on that. It's on our radar.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions.
Thank you.
But I do, you may sit down. I did receive the email so that everyone is on the same page with information I had asked during consent. The transient guest tax fund collected nine-point-eight million dollars in twenty-twenty-four, unaudited, of which two-point-six-three-five million went to Visit Wichita in their base contract, and another one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for convention promotion, for a total of two-point-seven-six-five million dollars to Visit Wichita, and that is in their audit on page four. And then, last but not least, I did ask this question to City Manager Leighton. I wanted to know, where does the remainder of the transient guest tax dollars get allocated to? City Manager, can you please say where it goes?
Mayor, we have approximately a million dollars that subsidizes the operations of Century Two, and then the remaining goes primarily to capital projects, improvements at Century Two, as well as cultural facilities that are owned by the city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those figures, and now we're all on the same page. Thank you, and I don't see any more questions from councilmembers, so we'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the Tourism Business Improvement District twenty-twenty-six scope of services and budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Community Events, Wichita River Festival.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Katie Eddy, Management Analyst for Park and Rec. So for over fifty years, Wichita Festivals, Inc., also known as W F I., has produced the Wichita River Festival. This year's community celebration is going to be held May thirtieth through June seventh, twenty-twenty-five. This event attracts local residents and tourists from within Kansas and the surrounding states. Wichita Festivals is coordinating with various city departments for licensing and street closure requests. It's important to note that Douglas, from Water to Waco Streets, will be closed throughout the duration of this event. And approval of the license report will be in lieu of the issuance of individual permits and authorizations. And that license report is included with your packet. On April fifteenth of this year, the City of Wichita entered into an M O U. with Wichita Festivals. This M O U. outlines in-kind services, permits, licenses, street. services, permits, licenses, street closures, and Wichita Police Department security that we're providing for Wichita Festivals. And with that, it is recommended that the city council approve the licensing report, street closures, and request for permit for the 2025 Wichita River Festival, per the MOU between the city and Wichita Festivals Incorporated. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions for staff? I see none. Thank you very much, Katie. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I am really excited about Wichita River Fest, and glad that the city will continue supporting this citywide festival. Buttons are on sale right now, and really appreciate all the efforts, not just by the staff, but more importantly, by the volunteers. It takes hundreds, if not thousands, of volunteers to put on the Wichita River Festival, and I'm very appreciative of that, because it does bring, again, quality of life to our community, and so I am very supportive of this. And so I move to approve the licensing report, street closures, and request for permit for the 2025 Wichita River Festival, per the MOU between the city and WFI.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
DER 2025-8, initiation of comprehensive plan amendment regarding the city of Wichita urban growth area near 55th Street South and Ridge Road.
Good morning. Scott Wade from the Planning Department. I'll be relatively brief here, so I don't have a PowerPoint. This item is to consider whether to initiate a review and amendment process for the comprehensive plan known as the Community Investments Plan. Specifically, it would look at the Wichita Urban Growth Area near 55th Street South and Ridge Road. This item is coming to you because questions have been raised about how to get the process started. In terms of background, discussions about the future of development in the area have led to questions about future land uses, contamination in the area, and also the ability to serve the area with municipal services. In terms of next steps or analysis, if the Wichita City Council initiates the process, then the next step would be to work with the MAPC Advanced Plans Committee. Then it would go to the Full Planning Commission, before it comes back to the city council, and ultimately, it would go to the County Commission, because of the joint comprehensive plan between the city and the county. The recommended action for this item is to take action as determined necessary by the city council. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Scott. What is it currently zoned the majority of down in that area?
Oh, I believe the majority of it is rural residential, because it's out in the county.
Okay, so would some of the zoning changes look at business areas, or the, the, how proper it might be to have additional residential multifamily units, or?
Exactly. So what types of future land use would, would work best there, given the dynamics of being at the very end of the city's growth area, extending services, and also groundwater contamination, potentially soil contamination that's in the area from the old Vulcan plant down in that location?
Okay, so is that more what's driving this, is the concern about the soil contamination?
I think all three factors, really, about what is going on in the area in terms of land use, and you've got Hayesville kind of off to one side, you've got Wichita north, and then you've got contamination located to the south and east, as well as what are the chances and the timing of getting municipal services extended in that area?
Okay, Lambo recently did a, a growth plan. Is that going to be incorporated into this at all?
You know, that's a good idea to incorporate. I can reach out to him, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. Bring it back to the bench, Councilmember Glasscock.
Mayor, seeing there's nobody on the board, I move to initiate a review of the amendment process for the Community Investment Plan, Comprehensive Plan, regarding the Wichita Urban Growth Area near 55th Street South and Ridge Road. In support of this motion, for the following, this process gives us an opportunity to review scenarios for the highest and best use in the area, and that land use in this area is complicated because of the nearby brownfield site and distance to utilities.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Summer camp bus transportation.
Good morning again. Katie Eddy, Management Analyst, Park and Recreation. The Department of Park and Recreation will host the Summer of Discovery and Summer Activity Camps this summer for nine weeks at six locations. Summer of Discovery is held at Edgewood, Edgemore, Linwood, and Orchard Rec Centers. Summer Activity Camp is held at Colvin, Evergreen, and Lynette Woodard Rec Centers. In 2026, the Summer Activity Camp will also be held at the Brewer Community Center, which is set to open this fall after a pretty thorough renovation process. Field trips make up a large part of the programming for these summer camps, and safe and reliable bus transportation is absolutely essential to get campers and staff from the campsite to their field trip, and then back again to the, to the campsite. We did issue a request for proposals to solicit vendors for this bus transportation service. Those proposals were due back in February, and then in March, the Staff Screening and Selection Committee reviewed the proposals and scheduled interviews of both vendors that applied. Following the interviews, the committee selected First Student as the preferred vendor. We do have a 15-year history of dedicated service from First Student to Park and Recreation. They have well-documented safety procedures, including lots of training opportunities, ratings, random drug testing, and background checks for their drivers. They also have a very modern bus fleet. They're transitioning all their buses over to air-conditioned, so we're hoping that we can get the AC buses this summer. Financial considerations, First Student proposed providing the buses at a cost of $95 per bus hour, with a minimum of two hours for any trip per vehicle. The estimated number of hours that are needed for field trips for all six camps are listed in this table, with 2025 expenditures expected to be about $102,000 this summer, and funding is available in the adopted Park and Recreation operating budget. Law Department has reviewed and approved this contract as the form, and it is recommended the city council approve the vendor selection, approve the contract, and authorize necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Katie. I have a couple of questions really quick about how many kiddos participate in the summer program, and is it still available, and can you tell the community about it?
Yeah, there's a, there, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it is a few hundred students participate every year. We do have a handful of them actually that are on scholarship as well. We have a great relationship with our Housing Department that provides CSBG funds to provide scholarships for students. I think it's about half of the students in the Summer Activity Camp, and about 10% in the Summer of Discovery camps. We do still have open registration at this point. A lot of them are pretty full, but I do believe there are still open registrations at this point. You can go to the Park and Recreation website for information on how to sign up.
Thank you, Katie. These are great opportunities, and that's why I wanted community to know that, especially because the Summer Camp Bus Transportation item will affect Districts One, Three, and Six, that if there are kiddos from those areas, if their parents are watching or guardians, that this would be a great opportunity for summer activity for them.
Yes, and it is important to note as well that our summer camps are fully licensed childcare providers through KEDG, so, so it's important to note that it is a safe environment for kids for, for the childcare, and they do, the different camps offer different hours. So I believe one of the camps is more like a 10 to 5 structure, and then the other is like a more full daycare structure of like 7 to 6.
Thank you, Katie. Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. This is in Districts One, Three, and Six. Would any of those council members like to move?
Thank you. I would like to take the recommended action. I move to approve the vendor selection, approve the contract, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2025-2026, Second Program Year HUD Annual Action Plan.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrew Tyree. I'm a Management Analyst with the Housing and Community Services Department, and as was mentioned, I'm here to discuss the 25-26 Second Program Year Annual Action Plan. Before we get too, too deep into it, just a little bit of backgrounds. The city receives an allocation of funds for community development activities from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. These funding activities align with the city's goal of creating a livable and sustainable community, and these funds are used to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities, and affordable housing. So, we operate off of a couple of different planning documents, wanted to kind of give a brief, touch briefly on those as well. First, you might remember, this time last year, I was here, we were here for the Consolidated Plan. Every five years, we have to submit what is known as the Consolidated Plan to HUD. And what that plan is, it identifies community development needs, affordable housing needs, homeless needs, and other priorities of the city. So basically, it sets our goals and priorities for a five-year, five-year period. What's next is just like it says, the Annual Action Plan. That's a yearly plan that we have to submit. The Annual Action Plan is also required by HUD. That plan details projects and activities proposed that, you know, meet the strategic needs and goals that are identified in the cons and consolidated plan. With the action plan, it has to go hand in hand with the consolidated plan, so we can't, you know, propose any activities or projects that don't align with the consolidated plan without doing what's called a substantial amendment. So, just kind of keep that in mind as we're looking through this. But these plans serve as the application for funding for their federal entitlement programs listed here. First, with the Community Development Block Grants, otherwise known as CDBG, that's a very flexible funding source. We can use that for a wide range of community development needs. We also have the Home Investment Partnership, our home program. That's for strictly for the, it's used to create affordable housing for low-income individuals. And then lastly, we have the Emergency Solutions Grant, our ESG, and that's used specifically for homelessness services. So, planning process, we have a public comment period that began on March 28th, 2025, and ran through last night, March 5th, or May 5th, excuse me, 2025. During that time, we solicited public comment. I attended, staff attended April DAB meetings at the districts listed there. District Two, we provided a recording of our presentation for comments. And then last night, I attended the DAB meeting at District Five. Second Program Year Action Plan, that's due to HUD no later than 60 days after HUD publishes the final allocations for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. That is our program year. I'll touch on it a little bit here in a minute, but we, as of today, we still do not have those final allocation amounts. So, kind of wanted to camp out here just for a minute. We're, we're doing things a little bit differently this year than we have in previous years. In previous years, we would have funds that were allocated but not yet under contract. If, if, you know, for whatever reason, if those funds weren't utilized in that program year, they were held open in the year allocated, so those kind of, those were classified as prior year resources. And then so, for example, CDBG funds, we have six years to spend out those funds. And so you'll have, from program year to program year, you'll have funds that, like I said, don't get, don't get expended, and so those are kind of fall into that prior year funding category. And so after a while, that can be kind of burdensome to track internally. And so this year, what we're, what we're doing, in order to ease that burden, and also to meet expenditure deadlines, because we can run into timeliness issues with these funding allocations. So any funding that was previously allocated but not yet under contract, we've swept those and reallocated those into the current program year that we're looking at today. And so, those are shown as prior year resources. So you're going to see some amounts that are larger than normal, and that's because we're, we're putting all those prior year resources in this, this next program year budget. Award amounts, like I touched on already, they've not yet been released. So what we have to do in this kind of a situation, we have to use current, current program year amounts, which you see on your screen for CDBG Home and ESG. For program year 24-25, which we are in currently, this was our allocation that we received. So for the purpose of discussion and planning, we're using those current funding amounts. And it kind of, it details it more in the agenda report, but in the events that, when we do get these, get our next program year amounts released to us, in the event that those come in at least 20% higher or lower, we'll have to reopen the public comment period and do this all over again. So you, you all will see me at your DABS again, so probably, you're probably hoping that doesn't happen. So, but that's, that's what, we'll have to go through this whole process all over again. So, again, in the agenda report, it highlights what, what will happen in that scenario a little more in detail. So the next few slides, we're going to go on through CDBG Home and ESG activities and funding amounts, resources. So I'm going to be detailing those in, in the upcoming slides. But we're going to start with CDBG. As I mentioned, this is used for a wide range of community development needs. In order for an activity or a project to meet eligibility for CDBG, it has to be, has to meet one of three national objectives, which are on your screen there. It must be used for eligible spending activities. At least 70% of spending must benefit low-to-moderate income individuals. And when it comes to public services, CDBG public services dollars, here in the city of Wichita, we are traditionally public services heavy. We have a, we're capped at public services at that 1.1 million amount annually. That's, that's about 30% of our approximate award. Nationally, the public services cap is 15%, so that we're grandfathered in at that 30%, which means we have a little more that we can spend towards public services, which is good. But we'll start under infrastructure projects with CDBG. We're looking to allocate low over $633,000 for infrastructure projects. Those projects can include, but not be limited to park improvements, bus shelters, sidewalks, street paving, stormwater sewer drainage, sewer drainage projects, those types of, of projects there. Demolition and clearance, we're looking to allocate $100,000. Historically, we operate under a MOU with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Development, or MABCD. Their staff cites those structures that, that are looking to be demoed and cleared, and so that's what that allocation amount would go towards. We're looking to allocate, we have some Section 108 loan proceeds that we're, that we have, so we're looking to allocate 620, almost $621,000 of those, along with a CDBG allocation of just under $380,000. That totals to a million dollars. We're looking to put that towards the Plainview Community Center, so that's going to be to support the construction of that new center in Plainview neighborhood. CDBG allocation of 1 million will go towards, to build non-congregate shelter, and this is going to be at the multi-agency center site, the MAC site. But yeah, that's what we're looking to do with that. And you can see how all that breaks down under public facility, or under infrastructure projects. Low over 2.7 million are looking to go towards those projects there. Next, we have housing activities. We're looking to allocate 1 point, low over 1.2 million. And this is for our home repair program. As a reminder, the home repair program assists low to moderate-income homeowners with critical home repairs. And so that's a very important program in our community, and so we're looking to, like I said, 1 point, over 1.2 million for that. Under acquisition, disposition, and rehabilitation, we're looking to allocate the, some priority resources towards, towards these, this, these projects here, low over 1.2 million for that. And this is all about creating, sustaining new affordable housing, or current affordable housing opportunities. And there's how that breakdown looks, a little under 2.5 million for housing activities. Next, CDBG administration. HUD allows up to 20% of our allocation to be used towards administration. administration costs, and there's how that breaks down, a little under $595,000 for program management and indirect costs. And there's that breakdown again. CDBG Public Services, I kind of touched on this earlier, and we do, we're at that public services cap there of a little over 1.1 million. It's allocated with the programs below. First is the Housing First Program Delivery, at 103,000, that funds our full-time Housing First employee in our department. Subrecipient Public Services, 475,000. We have a good mix right now of domestic violence providers, youth providers, and homeless providers as well under that, under those public services subrecipient dollars. As a reminder, last spring, we had an RFP for that $475,000. We convened the Grants Review Committee, which came together, looked over all the applicants that responded to that RFP, and they got together and determined the funding amounts, and that was for a two-year funding cycle, so that was this current program year and this next program year that we're discussing today. However, it's kind of hard to believe, we're going to be looking at the next three years of our consolidated, consolidated plan, the final three years, and so we will be putting out another RFP for those services late this year. So we'll be also looking to reconvene the Grants Review Committee again, so I'll be getting in touch with all the, all the, just all council members there to recommend some Grants Review nominees, so just a heads up on that. But moving forward, still, under Public Services, we have 385,000 that goes towards community service representatives and admin assistants at, at Water, Colvin, and Evergreen, and then we have $200,000 for the Way to Work Program. That's going to be ramping up here soon. Next month, you will see youth workers in the building again this summer, and so that is for the Way to Work Program. And there's our Public Services Dollars breakdown. Lastly, under CDBG, we have, we still have a little over a half a million dollars in CDBG CARES money. If you recall back in 2020, 2021, the city received around 3.6 million in CARES money, and this was funding that was used to address COVID-19 specifically. All these funds have to be expended by June 24th, 2026, so a little over a year from now. As I said, we still have a little over half a million. One of the challenges with this funding is that you have to tie it to COVID, and so this has kind of been a challenge with, with all the providers that have this kind of funding. And so, last fall, I was actually able to attend technical assistance at the HUD field office, and kind of brainstorm on how we can get these funds out the door. And so, homeless activities was one of the common uses for, for this, kind of the idea behind this, if you have less people in shelters, less people in encampments, that's less risk of illnesses, including COVID being spread, and so we're looking to allocate that 504,000 to the activities there on your screen. And these are all for, like I said, homeless, homeless services. And there's how that breaks down there with the CV money. All right, next, we have Home Investment Partnerships, or the Home Program. Again, as a reminder, these are funds that are for the creation of affordable housing for low-to-moderate income individuals. And that's, that $11 million there that you'll see on the screen, that's just, that's not just our allocation amount, that's again, with like with CDBG, it's previous years funding that were not under contract, we're sweeping that all into this next year's budget. HUD allows 10% program administration and indirect costs to be applied for home, and there's that total there. Home Duplex Engagement, this was actually something that we tweaked a little bit under our comment period. This is an interdepartmental collaboration between us and planning, and so we, due to some feedback we got in our comment period, we've changed that to the 35,000 there. And then some of these programs that you are probably pretty familiar with, homeownership, down payment assistance, multifamily rental rehab, tenant-based rental assistance, and then we still have home ARP funding, a little under 4.7 million that we're looking to allocate. And this is for the development of 25 units of non-congruent shelter and 50 units of permanent supportive housing, and again, that's at the multi-agency center site as well. And lastly, under Home, we have the Housing Development Loan Program and Community Housing Development Organization, or CHODO, set aside, and it's a little over 1.6 million there, and just a reminder for HDOP, these funds can be used by nonprofit or for-profit developers, and this is for the development of affordable housing, rental or homebuyer units, and it can be rehabilitation and new construction. And there is a minimum for the CHODO set aside, a minimum of 15% of the total home allocation. And CHODOs, as a reminder, there are some requirements for, to be a CHODO, and those are on the screen there. Just some things with, with CHODOs, they have to recertify for each project that they're involved with, and so there are some, like I said, some requirements there. Currently, just for example, Minnetonka and Jacob's Ladder are a couple of CHODOs that we're working with right now. And there's how the home allocations total out. And lastly, Emergency Solutions Grants, or ESG, and again, this is for homeless, this can be used to address homelessness. Some of the services, our activities that we can use ESG for is homeless services, that includes shelter operations, outreach, essential services, homeless prevention, which, which sounds exactly like it is, that prevents families that are in danger of becoming homeless, that prevents them, helps prevent them from becoming homeless with rent and utility assistance. And then we have the Rapid Rehousing Program, a rapid rehousing which focuses on short-term rent and utility assistance for folks that are literally homeless. We'll start with homeless prevention, and the amount of $50,000. I mentioned earlier about the RFP that went out for CDBG Public Services. Last spring, our RFP also went out for homeless prevention dollars. The Catholic Charities St. Anthony's Family Shelter was chosen to administer those funds, which they did for this program year 2425, however, they have, however, they have declined to continue that service for 2526. And so as a department, we needed to find a good use for these funds, and so what we're looking to do is pilot a program that will be addressing our community's return to homelessness rate, which right now sets at, sits at about 25%. So, we're looking to kind of help with that, that, that problem there. So this program is going to be for those who were previously homeless and are in danger of becoming homeless again, so trying to prevent that, obviously. So, $50,000 will be going towards that pilot program. Also, under ESG, we have Encampment and Unsheltered Coordination, and this funding will go towards staff costs for engaging persons in encampments, coordinating resources and service providers. Basically, it's, it's in the hope to, we have someone in an encampment, it's the hopes, hopes of giving them resources so that they can get into permanent housing, so they're not just going from one encampment to the next, and so that's what we're looking to do there with those dollars. And lastly, under ESG, we have Rapid Rehousing, $35,105, and that's funding to be made available for rent and utility assistance. Again, for those that are literally homeless, this is to enable them to move into permanent housing. And then we also have program administration and indirect charges for ESG at 7.5%. So that's a little under $20,000 that we're looking, that we allocate for that as well. And there's how that breaks down. So during our public comment period, I kind of touched on it earlier, DAB meetings, attended those in April and then one in May. We did receive some feedback during our comment period, just put a few of those comments, those comments on the screen, touched on the one with Plain Department, YMCA, Kansas Biggs, our hot team, all sent in some, some feedback for us as well. Financial considerations, there is no impact on the general funds, and touched on it earlier, but in the event actual allocations are at least 20% higher or lower than estimated, we must restart the citizen participation process and come back before City Council again. And again, the agenda report further defines how variances in funding amounts, less than 20% will be handled. Legal considerations, all funding agreements will be approved as deformed by the law departments. And the recommendation, which is kind of a long one, is recommended that the City Council close the public hearing, approve the approximate funding allocations, authorize staff to make adjustments to funding allocations as described in the financial consideration section upon receipt of HUD grant allocations, approve associated budgets, and authorize staff to make any necessary budget adjustments, and authorize submission of the 2526 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the funding agreements and necessary signatures. And at this time, entertain any questions, I believe I have some backup in case, in case, need to call a lifeline or whatever, so, but yeah.
Thank you for the presentation, we'll begin with Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation, that is very overwhelming. So what would you say to, a lot of that funding appears to be part of the information that we got about funding that could maybe be jeopardized? The CBDG funds, I mean, all of the things that you talked about are incredibly important to our community, and I know we don't know anything like for sure, but what would we do, what do we do, that's very scary.
Yeah, so, I don't know exactly, I mean, I know, right, and I know that, you know, the President just released his, his budget there, and it was for, I think, all of it, yeah. So, I don't know if Sally has anything to add, but we would just have to, we would just have to basically, you know, adjust, for sure.
Thank you, Sally, staying with Housing and Community Services Department for the record, yes, we're seeing dire things coming from the President's recommended budget. However, the funding allocations for program year that starts July 1st is covered under the continuing resolution that was passed earlier this year, and so that's why we were comfortable moving forward with approximate budgets, similar to what they were last year. I would not be doing, I will not be doing this next year, actually coming out ahead of the allocations, because I think we will be spinning our wheels at that point. This year, we feel comfortable moving forward, that those allocations will come in within that 20% limit. We also don't like to have to delay, so last year, there was a delay, and when they allocated funds, and then there were other delays in HUD processing the consolidated plan, where we didn't receive our, our actual grant agreements until October 29th, for programs that had to start July 1st. That really made it very challenging, so this year, we wanted to make sure we're comfortable moving forward the way we have, if something were to happen, because honestly, I cannot predict what's going to come out, we would be starting that process over and coming back.
Wonderful, I just have two more quick questions. Did we exhaust all of our money for the demos in previous years?
We did not, in that, you know, we had a couple of years where we had funds still, where we talked about where they were just held open from the past years, made it really, really challenging to, to track, you know, from funding year 22, from 20, you know, funding year 23. So we made that decision to pretty much close out those previously approved allocations and reallocate fresh to make it easier to track.
Okay, my last question is, can you speak at all to St. Anthony's declining the, to continue moving forward?
Honestly, they said it was too administratively burdensome to administer, and it truly is, there are a lot of federal requirements for ESG, including 100% match for our, for the grantee to be able to provide. So between having to do inspections and all of the documentation, having to provide 100% match, it's very, very challenging. And so, you know, this year, it is, it is a pilot, we're trying to solve an issue that's hit our continuum of care hard, which is that 25% return to homelessness rate. So if we can get in, and, and that homeless prevention can be used to move someone who might be in danger of being evicted, to be able to collaborate and mediate with the landlord to say, hey, if we can get them moved to another unit, can we forego the eviction? It is really giving us that opportunity to do that this year.
Do you think it is more like workload-heavy, or it wasn't enough to compensate for all of the work, or both?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys, this presentation, actually, especially at DABS, was a lot more consolidated than it has been in the years past, so our DAB was able to follow along relatively this year, so I appreciate that. Two quick questions, one, and you touched on it a little bit, what are the chances you think that we're going to be outside that 20% higher or lower and have to come back to this? Is it great, is it miniscule?
Based that the, this year's funding is in the continuing resolution, I, I really do think we're going to be within the 20% range for this year, next year, don't know.
Okay, second question, how much did we spend out of, out of last year's home repair program? Exhausted that funding, or was there some left over?
There definitely was some left over, so we actually, the prior, prior to this current year, the year before that, so from July, in July of 2023, HUD actually put a halt on our home repair program due to some environmental, phase tier one and tier two environmental review requirements. So that program was down. They allowed us to reopen in February, we took that opportunity, when we were down, doing the environmental work, to restructure the program, because prior, it, the program was limited to a $5,000 repair, and it had been $5,000 for like 20 years, and there's not much you can do for $5,000 anymore. And so we took that opportunity to completely revamp the program, created an online application, new rankings in emergency situations, but also broadened it to allow people to do up to a $25,000 project. And so, we are about, we reopened the waiting list for that in February, we had our first projects after completing tier two environmentals on specific projects, putting them out to bid and all of that, so we really didn't hit projects starting until about March of that program year, which only gave us a couple of months of spending. So we had carryforward money from that year that rolled into this year. And then what we're seeing, so we're in the process of evaluating that program right now, because we're seeing many people are not taking advantage of the ability to go to those higher amounts. So we're evaluating the reasons behind that, and going to be making some recommendations on tweaking that program plan, so that people are doing comprehensive renovations and not just putting a Band-Aid on something. So there is money carrying forward, and once again, we decided, rather than trying to track that from the past year, sweep it all and reallocate in the current.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah, I've heard maybe two issues with it, and one is people who are on the waiting list for a while, and I think that was a concern, is just being on the waiting list for a while. The second one was that a lot of these projects are not eligible because people don't have homeowner's insurance, and that's kind of the issue, like they can't get homeowner's insurance because of a lot of the, the needs for repairs, like a leaky roof and what.
Well, what we've learned through this, though, is most of the insurance companies are willing, once they, to insure it, once they know the work is coming. So that really isn't as much of, of the issue, because the insurance companies will come back to the table once you give them the plan of the work that's going to be done. It is more about people's ability to pay for their homeowner's insurance.
Okay, so, so, there will be some consultation with that, I suppose?
Absolutely.
Okay, glad to hear about that change, all right, thank you, Sally.
I have a list of questions, I'll start with Sally. We're known as an entitlement city, can you explain what that means, and can you give us comparables? How much does Tulsa, Oklahoma get versus Kansas City, Kansas/Missouri sides? I'm just curious.
We would actually have to, so, an entitlement city is a city of over 50,000 people, easy. And by having over 50,000 people, you are entitled to receive a piece of the pie. And so, Congress allocates a dollar amounts for these different programs, and then depending on the number of cities and their on the number of cities and their individual populations, and sometimes other criteria, they divide up the pie. And so even, you know, the continuing resolution said, it continued funding at last year's funding level for these programs, but what can affect that, that's why I say it's not going to be exactly what it was last year, is more communities have hit the $50,000, 50,000 person population, and so you have more, more people taking a bite of the pie. And so even if it is 100% funding, we would see a slight decrease just because there are a couple of additional cities that entered into that pool. Different funding amounts, the HUD does not actually publish their formula on how they calculate that. And it is, it is obviously different, and we've heard them talk about, for example, ESG. ESG is not just, the Emergency Solutions Grant is not just about population, it's also about the data in the HMIS system that is, you know, showing the need within the community. So they take some other factors that aren't exactly published. And so same holds true with the home program, and they're looking at other factors around the availability of affordable housing at different income levels, and they use a formula to determine what each entitlement community receives. Comparing it to, I'd have to look it up, but we can definitely, HUD publishes that from entitlement city to entitlement city right on the HUD exchange, and you can look at different communities and see what they're getting. There are actually four buckets that are available as an entitlement. We don't hit the qualifier for HAPWA funds, which is housing opportunities for people with AIDS. We only receive funding under the three others. There are other communities that might receive CDBG funds and receives no home funds, but that is all spelled out on the allocations page of the HUD exchange.
Thank you. I think it would be interesting for the other council members to also get that information if you have that. I've been getting emails about individuals who think that we're not doing anything with homelessness. And as I've gotten this presentation, and we're all hearing it at the same exact time, there's a lot of dollars that are being spent on helping individuals with homelessness, who are experiencing homelessness. So how can we get the message out of, these are, we have been investing in homelessness, and we have been helping with homelessness? And I guess the frustration with community is they think that we're not doing anything with homelessness. So can you help me, Sally?
I don't disagree.
Sally, can I start? And then I'll turn it over to you. Mayor, in response to some concerns, you expressed similar, in a similar matter, end of last week, we've put together a response, first of all, to deal with the questions about encampments and what we've done since January on encampments and how much we've spent, how much, how many hours and how many tons have been removed from encampments. And that'll be the first thing that we're going to share. And then we also are going to talk about what we have in terms of funding for homelessness programs. And then I believe the MAC is going to come in and talk about their transition and what they're working through. So I think there were some other questions that you had asked specifically, but in terms of getting the word out, once we share that with you and the council, then we want to put something together that can be shared with the community to understand that we are taking the issue very seriously. And I think one of the things we want to highlight is this new position that's being created to try to move people directly from encampments into housing, and how we'll also work with partners to make sure that the necessary resources are there to make them be successful. Sally, that, that was the backdrop for what I think we're providing.
I feel it too. It is, I always say, one of our biggest weaknesses in our department is we're always so busy doing, we, sometimes we forget to stop and celebrate, right, and get that word out there. It's also part of the strategic goals that are part of this year's budget process. And so I have asked to be placed on the board agenda for the continuum of care, to have a discussion about a public-facing dashboard that can, can represent, you know, the inflows and outflows of people entering homelessness, what types of services are, you know, are actually happening, happening every day, because it is happening every day. We can see what comes of that.
Thank you, Sally. Can you go to slide number 148? So that's in particular to the comment that the city manager just mentioned, this is a new position. When will that begin?
Last Monday. Yes. She started, Lacy Stanbury, she, we actually, this, to me, this is a success story. Several years ago, we started the social work internship program. Lacy was with us for a year while she worked on her master's in social work. She applied for this position and has moved into this role. And so she's able to hit the ground running because she is familiar with a lot of the agencies, the players, and even the other departments. So she, we will be, you know, moving very quickly with her in this role. We're also back hiring a couple of housing case managers as well that will be resources for her, because aside, once we get somebody housed, we need to make sure that they have the appropriate case management and wraparound services.
Can you address maybe with how this particular role will help with when community members see an encampment? There is outreach, so it's not just cleaning up an encampment, but there's actual outreach. Can you explain how that ecosystem kind of works so that people understand we're not just cleaning up encampments, but we're really trying to help individuals connect to the resources that are available in our community? And then unfortunately, they're breaking the law, so that is part of the encampment cleanup.
Well, that is the goal. We are working collaboratively to create the strategic plan for how we're addressing and closing encampments and taking care of the people that are there, making sure that we are doing that outreach onsite, taking the resources. We learned a lot from Mandy Chapman Semple, who came and spoke at the housing conference last month on how they deploy directly within, you know, the encampment space and trying, but understanding that that is not an overnight. It is not going to happen overnight. We can't send our new encampment coordinator into an encampment of 30 people and expect in a day or two. It's going to take months to get them engaged, get them qualified, figure out what, you know, whatever resources that they need, try and make sure we're addressing that to be able to move them, whether it's directly to shelter or directly into housing.
Can the priority be the individuals who are, have encampments that are posing an immediate health risk or safety risk? For instance, just yesterday, I had another encampment notification regarding encampments underneath Douglas Street, or the Douglas Bridge at the river. And so again, that would be, if I remember correctly, the ordinance has changed now, correct? Is it 48 or 20, 48 hours cleanup?
Mayor, if you give me just a second, I actually have a report on that one for you. I believe that was, because of its location, I believe that was an immediate notice, and I believe that notice was fought, was served yesterday.
Well, I reported that on Sunday of not this last week, but the week before, when we were celebrating the 50th anniversary of Shocker Rowing. So that's more than a week.
Yes, but that has to do with the backlog, I believe. We're, I'm looking at that process right now. It's because it has to be authorized by the police department and primarily by the HOT, by HOT. And so the chief is looking at why the delay in that one camp.
So in that situation, if something like that happens, I would, now that there's a new role that Lacy's going to fill, can that be an immediate interaction? So I'm not specifically asking for the encampments where there are 30 not posing of an immediate health risk at the current moment sidewalk, et cetera. Can, can Lacy get out there right away and connect with the individual and say, here are some resources? The MAC is available. The MAC has 24/7 sheltering, and there's always a bed available. So can, can you address that? Because I think the community is getting very frustrated. They think that there are resources, or maybe there are not resources, and I keep sharing that there are resources, and this, this council has invested nearly $13 million towards a solution.
Sure. So first, you know, the encampment closure strategy that we have in draft right now, one of the key components of that is the evaluation of encampments for exactly what you're saying. Where are the situations where this is putting either the people staying there or the public at risk, and those are the ones that need to be addressed and prioritized on the list? Lacy is not the only one. We are also needing to engage coordinated outreach through the continuum of care and other agencies as part of that process. Lacy, for us, is that conduit between HOT team, Parks and Rec, the, and the agencies in the community to try and connect all of those things, working in the same direction, right? To address those most dire situations. Thank you.
Sally, do you want to talk about triage too, especially veterans?
So part of, yes, that's the other piece to it, is as, as they go into encampments and try and identify people who are there, the new homeless, the homeless encampment tool, which is the expansion on HMIS, will allow us to actually drop a pin to identify this person was here. Once we identify the person, the next step is, is there a resource that can serve that individual person? Because resources come from different sources. So for veterans, there are resources. There is SSVF and VASH vouchers, that there has been, been no delay or no stay, right? We, all of our other resources have been kind of on hold for a short period of time, except those veteran resources. So once we hear that there's a veteran, and that was true even at the emergency winter shelter, if we were made, if, if data was entered into the system that picked that this is a veteran, we can then send those resources. Same holds true for what they call youth, which is 18 to 24-year-olds, crossroads, and the Wichita Children's Home has, has resources specific to that population. When we find out or run into either in an encampment or in shelter that we have someone that fits that demographic, we're reaching out to that organization to try and get them into that, you know, enrolled into their programs or engaged with that person. So that's part of, of the whole strategy. It is complicated. We're talking lots of people, lots of locations, and, and the priorities can be pulling from one direction and in another. So trying to balance all of that is the challenge.
Thank you, Sally. Can I go to slide 135 now? I also wanted to let community know, besides homelessness, youth crime prevention, youth involvement is also a priority. And so you can see that there are $200,000 being allocated for youth programming from YMCA, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Prime Fit Youth Foundation, and even Plainview Colvin Kids Club. So I know it's hard to allocate the $475,000 and spread it out equally, but I think that it's important, as we've been talking about homelessness so much, we are also talking about how to prevent individuals from ever becoming homeless, and so these are some prevention methods. Can you talk about, you know, the balance that we have to have here? Because there are, we're trying to do prevention, but also there are individuals who are already experiencing some things in our community.
Sure. One thing that I find really fascinating, so in the last consolidated plan of that covered from 2019 to 2024, our public services was restricted, based on public feedback, to youth crime prevention and enrichment, domestic violence, shelter services, and homelessness. Well, we had some feedback during that five-year period that said, but you're not making these resources available for things outside of that. So when we did the RFP last year, we actually, and created the consolidated plan, we lifted that requirement. But isn't it interesting that the Grants Review Committee still recommended funding those three areas? Over, and we did, we had received applications for other public services, but they still honed in, even though it wasn't a requirement, to fund these type of activities. Absolutely. You know, youth crime, youth enrichment and crime prevention, huge, huge need. And you can see it in, in those recommendations. $475,000 a year isn't a lot, but these funds help those programs continue. They can use that to leverage other funding, and if we can get at, you know, people when they're struggling, when they're young, it's much easier than addressing it when, when they're older and in trauma and challenges are even more deeply rooted and more challenging to overcome. So very, very important, you know, domestic violence is in there. Again, huge need for our community. It actually overlaps with homelessness, because someone fleeing domestic violence actually meets HUD's definition of homeless. So again, more, more funds going in that direction. So it is a balancing act, and it's not a tough, an easy decision. There were some really great applications submitted for funding. There's just not enough funding to go around.
Thank you for what you guys do, Sally, which is why I'm going to ask for slide number 141 regarding the duplex plans. I think this is an innovative solution. Can you talk about, earlier in today's council meeting, we were talking about design fees. They are expensive. So if someone has a plan already, you don't have to pay for the design fees, or you can modify very, with very little cost. Can you talk about this duplex idea and how that can help with more housing, number one, but also with reduction in costs?
This one's amusing to me, too. This stemmed from, actually, Planning Director Scott Waidell came to a homelessness task corps subcommittee on housing, and he did a presentation on zoning, because often that's, that's a topic. And we, you know, zoning by, whether you can do duplexes by right, and there, you know, there are different conversations happening out there. And in that conversation, he was kind of threw out there and said, hey, you know, what if, you know, what if there were plans available that had already been vetted with neighborhoods to be able to do duplexes even on single-family lots and, and this sort of thing? Well, we didn't talk after that necessarily about this particular thing, and I thought, you know what, that's really interesting, and I believe if we do that and, and do it to build affordable duplexes for qualifying families, that we can do that. We could invest so that we could have some pre-approved plans that would then, we could then make, that we own and could make available to developers building affordable housing. And so I put, and that's the difference, I had put $30,000 in our, and that comes out of our home admin and planning line item to, to invest in this idea. Come to find out, Scott was going down the same path on his side of the world, and his, his plan and request for actually a program option was for $35,000. And I said, you know what, we can, we, I can move some things around to make that happen on our side. So it was just interesting that we, it came out of a community conversation and a task force meeting. We both kind of had the same idea, started heading in the same direction, and now we've come together to say, yeah, let's do this together.
I wanted you to talk about that, because that is exactly what the collaborative piece is, two different departments coming together. We have a problem. The problem is, we need more housing. And so when we can come together like that and find dollars that are already being allocated to help with housing, how can we be better partners? Thank you very much for thinking innovatively, because I know that there are developers out there, more smaller developers that want to build housing, but maybe don't have the dollars to invest in design fees right away. So this would be a great opportunity, so I'm excited about this. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking off of that and talking about this program, does it tie in with the Places for People program at all, or?
It would, in that Places for People really talks about being able to use different types, housing types, to try and fill that gap, as well as the idea around infill housing. So we're not talking about taking these plans out to a greenfield and building duplex, duplex, you know, this is about how can we, where there are already, you know, infrastructure in place, is there the, the ability to be able to build a duplex where there, in an established neighborhood, and we're able to provide housing to two different households? Whether that's owner, 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 you know, renter, renter, or owner, renter, you know, that's the beauty of behind a duplex, is you can structure those in many different ways.
Councilmember, we plan on bringing something forward this summer at a workshop to talk, to revisit the Places for People plan. There were some discussions in that plan about duplex by right in certain zoning districts. We never pulled the trigger on that. There were some concerns, I think, in some neighborhoods initially, but I, this is, I think, a really good time to have that discussion again and talk about how we can bring a little more density into redevelopment efforts, and especially do it in a way where if you are allowed by right and you're working with us on pre-approved plans, I don't know how we can streamline the process anymore.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. So that'll be focusing on some of the permitting and, again, zoning, zoning by right possibly?
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to take the whole plan at one workshop and revisit, but I do, what we plan on doing are picking out some items that feed to the council's goals and strategies regarding affordable housing, and we'll be focused on a number of those recommendations from that plan.
Okay, I'll save my remarks and thoughts for that, that workshop. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also save my comments for the workshop, but very generally supportive of that idea.
And then just last but not least, sorry, I have a lot of questions. So slide number So slide number 151. This was in regards to better communication about the AAP. I really think this is a great idea. I know I asked at the beginning, we do spend a lot of dollars or invest a lot of dollars regarding homelessness, and maybe people just don't know about that. Could we work with communications department and see if there's something there to make it, instead of all the details, more high level on the big topic items, domestic violence being one of them, homelessness, youth crime prevention? If we could make it, maybe break it down like that, and even affordable housing, it might be helpful for community to see how these dollars are impactful in the community, and that we do appreciate these federal dollars, and we're being very intentional about allocating those dollars. Thank you very much. That is it on my questions. Anyone else? I see none. Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I must abstain to this vote.
I will move to close the public hearing, approve the approximate funding allocations, authorize staff to make adjustments to funding allocations as described in the financial consideration section upon receipt of HUD grant allocations, approve associated budgets and authorize staff to make any necessary budget adjustments, and authorize submission of the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the funding agreements and necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second any further discussion. I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Before we continue, can we maybe get a 15-minute break? We'll take a 15-minute break. We'll come back at 12:30 to resume the council meeting. Thank you.
Home Program Funding for Commonwealth Development Corporation of America, Ark River Residences.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Carmen Hoffine. I'm the Real Property Section Manager with the Department of Housing and Community Services. So I'm here to present the Home Program Conditional Commitment for Commonwealth Development Corporation of America, Ark River Residences. A little bit of background, on May 14th, 2024, the City Council approved final allocations from the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan, which included approximately 1.4 million in home investment partnership program funding for the Housing Development Loan Program, which is HDLP. The HDLP is designed to provide subsidies for infill housing, projects to support the development of real estate that is idle or underutilized, and to provide needed housing for underserved populations. HDLP funding is available for nonprofit or for-profit organizations. The loan structure is dependent on the type of project to be financed. Historically, the funding has been made available within the boundaries of the city's redevelopment incentives area, neighborhood revitalization area, or local investments areas. Funding requests are received on an open application basis. Commonwealth Development Corporation of America submitted an HDLP application for Ark River Residences ahead of the 2025 tax credit application process. Ark River Residences is a proposed 42-unit apartment project designed for families, and it's to be located at 5136 South Broadway. The project includes two multifamily residential buildings and one non-residential building. The development will address the critical need for affordable rental housing in Wichita as highlighted by HUD's Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy Data, which identifies over 28,000 households with unmet housing needs in the area. This project will provide high-quality, affordable homes in a well-resourced community for underserved families. The site is situated in a primarily residential and retail neighborhood, offering convenient access to essential services and amenities. The development is less than half a mile from a grocery store, shopping, pharmacy, childcare center, and a park, and this ensures residents have easy access to daily necessities. Public transportation is readily available with a nearby bus station, and the site is just one mile from I-135, providing a short 12-minute drive to downtown Wichita. By integrating into a well-resourced community, the development will support the long-term stability and well-being of its future residents. Yagan Omega is the proposed property management agent for this development. They are a Wichita-based company with extensive experience managing Lytec and affordable housing properties. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Commonwealth's representative, Liz Peterson.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me today. Liz Peterson, Development Services Manager with Commonwealth Development. So we are a national leader of creating affordable housing. And Mayor, I know you asked, when I was speaking on behalf of the multifamily revenue bonds, you asked why Wichita? And so I did just want to add a little bit more to that. So this is part of our strategic expansion. So we are building a portfolio. We have some neighboring states already with properties that we own and have developed in Colorado, Oklahoma, and Texas. And Yagan Omega, as mentioned, Wichita-based, we work with them in our Oklahoma properties. And so it just made sense to continue working with a trusted partner and expand into the Wichita market. And again, long-term owner, and the properties that we develop are affordable for a minimum of 15 years as part of the Lytec program. So for the unit mix that we'll be presenting, one, two, and three bedrooms at a range of 30% to 60% of area median income. And you can see the rents displayed, so it is important to us to have this wide range of income targeting. And based on a recent market study that we had completed by a third-party group, these 42 units represent 1% of the total income-eligible households in the community. So, you know, I think Council Hoheisel, you made a mention it's an elephant of a problem, so we're just trying to take, you know, one piece of that and address that with this project. So again, just 1% of the total eligible, income-eligible households will be impacted by this project, but, you know, one step at a time and wanting to make sure that we have all the amenities that are essential for housing stability. So having a playground and picnic area, and then again, you know, the community amenities that are nearby, grocery, childcare, shopping, all the things that make a place a good place to live. And I'll talk a little bit more about the special need population, the nonprofit service provider. So we would be looking to enter into a memorandum of understanding, so an MOU with a nonprofit service provider that would be supporting 10% of the units to serve this population, either with physical or mental disabilities. And some service providers we have identified or listed here, again, just the stage that we are at in the project, these are still preliminary conversations, but again, just looking to have that additional layer of services to ensure housing stability for our residents. So I'll just kind of flip through some comparable units that Commonwealth Development has brought. So dishwasher, highly energy-efficient appliances, so typically Energy Star-rated appliances. Another thing that was interesting in the market study that we recently did was in this area within South Wichita, there hasn't been a lot of new construction, either market rate or Lytec subsidized, in over 10 years. And so I think it's important just to note that this project represents, you know, new construction, bringing high-quality, amenity-rich housing to the South Wichita area. And unit laundry, that is always key. So project timeline, we're just a couple weeks away from submitting our low-income housing tax credit application to KHRC, and they make their decisions in August of 2025. And so where we stand today, you know, this commitment, conditional commitment, is really important, and I think, you know, the big picture is that the home funds really do allow our project to be competitive, more competitive with KHRC. So this represents 10 additional points that we can claim on our low-income housing tax credit application that we're submitting, again, in just a few weeks. So these home funds that you are conditionally approving today are very critical to the success of this project. And if we are selected for funding by KHRC in August, we plan to close winter of 2026, 14-month construction duration, so spring of 2027, we'll be welcoming those residents. And again, based on the demand, we project a three-to-four-month lease-up, so a very short lease-up period. And, you know, I think overall, we're ready to close January 2026 upon the tax credits from KHRC as well as the home funds from the City of Wichita. And just a note here about M&amp;A design, so we do have an in-house architectural firm, and this allows for a streamlined design process, so working with MABCD, the City of Wichita, to make sure we have all the design permitting that is needed for the construction. So talking about the sources and uses, the dollars and cents in the project, so a majority of the sources for the project do come either from federal or state Lytec equity, so this is actually private investment into the project that is approved by KHRC. And so, you know, they really do hold the keys to this project being successful. And so again, I just want to emphasize that while, you know, the City of Wichita requests the $420,000 that we're requesting conditionally today, this allows the project to be competitive for KHRC, so that additional 10 points that we can show that there is financial leverage, it helps the project be more financially feasible. And then we are also requesting home from KHRC. And then Ronoke Construction is our general contractor in the market. So happy to answer any questions at this time, or send it back to Carmen.
Thank you very much, Liz and Carmen. We'll begin with Councilmember, oh, do we have more?
Yes. Sorry. There's just a little bit more to go. Okay. So for financial considerations, there is no impact to the general fund. The total project cost is estimated to be approximately $12.5 million. Anticipated funding sources include 420,000 requested City of Wichita home funds, 600,000 for KHRC home National Housing Trust Fund, a little over $113,000 Commonwealth's deferred developer fee, a little over $7 million for federal Lytec, $4.3 million, approximately $4.3 million for state Lytec. And on March 31st, 2025, the HDLP application for this project was presented to the city's Affordable Housing Review Board, who reviewed the application and developer presentation. The Affordable Housing Review Board approved the application and directed staff to refer it to the City Council to approve the Director of Housing and Community Services issuance of a conditional commitment letter. New construction of affordable rental housing is an eligible cost under the Home Program. A funding agreement will be drafted, approved as to form by the Law Department, and will be placed on the City Council agenda for approval on a future date, provided Commonwealth Development Corporation of America is successful in securing all proposed sources of financing and meets all the terms set forth in the conditional commitment letter. It is recommended that the City Council approve issuance of a conditional commitment letter for home investment partnerships program financing in the amount of $420,000 for the Commonwealth Development Corporation of America Ark River Residences project, and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Services to sign. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Carmen, and thank you, Liz. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carmen and Liz. Good to see you again. So is this a loan, or is this a grant that we're giving out?
This, it's a loan.
Okay. Okay. When, what's the payback, I guess? When do we have any funds returned to it, or is that something that...
Sally will answer this question.
Okay. I'm more interested in this fund moving forward as well, because I know there's a lot of projects out there.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Hoheisel. It is a 1% loan. Per the, we follow the Lytec requirements that any loan be paid back only from positive cash flow, so they have to have excess cash flow during operations. Otherwise, it is deferred until after the affordability period.
Okay. Yep, that's the main question that I have. Yeah, that's it. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Carmen. Can I ask you a quick question? Could you go to Slide 161, please?
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. I think we all know when it comes to housing, there's lots of data and lots of information. The first bullet point, I don't think I've seen before. It says there's 28,175 households with unmet housing needs in the area. Could you just describe, what does that mean? Like, what's the definition of unmet housing needs? And then where does that data point come from? I'm just curious. I'm not at all questioning. I've just never seen that before, and so it really struck me as what is unmet housing needs?
So the HUD actually issues the Comprehensive Housing Strategy Data, we call it the CHAS. They used census data to put that information together. Unmet housing needs is pretty broad. It can mean paying more than 30% for housing.
Okay. That's what I wondered.
It can mean substandard housing, units without full kitchen facilities, and they, they break that out in that report. It is, and it is challenging, because no matter what source you look at, you're going to come up with a different number of, you know, the housing needs in our community. But this one is quoting directly from that HUD study.
And that's households, not individuals, right?
Correct.
So, okay, so, you know, when we're doing great work from the bench here partnering with communities, and we get 50 more units or 42 more units, we got a long way to go to get to the 28,000, right?
Right. And, you know, there could be other interventions to deal with someone's housing need. It could be a repair that then reduces that. It doesn't necessarily mean a new unit.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it, and thank you for all your effort.
Sally, since you mentioned that, you mentioned also anyone paying over 30%.
Yes.
Can you also address, maybe, you also mentioned no kitchen?
Yes.
So if you're living, say, for instance, like a dorm room style, you still have housing, but you share a kitchen, it's very customary with apartments by WSU to have this type of format. So does that take that 28,000 into account?
When they're talking incomplete kitchen, they're talking a single-family home that doesn't have full kitchen facilities. Units that are either shared housing or dormitory style, they have access to those facilities, so they're not, it's not unnecessarily a need, it's just a different structure. When you're looking at the CHAS report, they're actually talking about, it doesn't have adequate plumbing. I mean, people don't think that that kind of stuff happens, but it does still happen. There are still pockets. And oftentimes, it's not necessarily known, because nobody's been in, necessarily in a unit until it's brought into, to somebody's attention, that there are these significant deficiencies of that particular unit being substandard.
Thank you, Sally. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Sally, I have one more question. Given that they're applying for Lytec credits.
Yes.
And given the competition of Lytec credits, and there isn't a difference between public and private applications for Lytec credits, would this compete also against our applications for Lytec credits?
We don't have any applications in for the 9%.
Okay, thank you for that question. And then this would probably be more of a general question, anybody can answer this, but given that 11 million of it comes from Lytec applications, the project's not feasible unless they receive those.
That is absolutely, the first condition, is they have to receive the Lytec credits and the funding.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. What were the expected rents expected to be at these units? Maybe I missed it.
I think they were up there. Let me see. There, right there, on that slide. So between 420 and 1,048, depending on
The bedroom size.
The bedroom size and the targeted income level. So under tax credit projects, you designate a certain number of units to be targeted at people less than 30% of area median income, less than 40%. The deeper your, your, you often get more points if you're going into those lower, what they call set-asides. So they're going to have, what is that, four, five, six, seven units that are designated for people who are making under 30% of the area median income. And therefore, the rents on those units, even though they're one, two, and three-bedroom, are significantly lower than the rents for the people at 40% or 50% or 60% area median income.
Thanks, thanks for explaining this, I didn't understand it.
Thank you for that. I think we have no further questions from the bench. We will now open it up for public comment. I see no comments, we'll bring it back to the bench. This is Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I have to abstain from this vote.
Councilmember Hoheisel, this is your district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take, move that we take steps to recommended action and approve issuance of a conditional commitment letter for Home Investment Partnership Program financing in the amount of $420,000 for the Commonwealth Development Corporation of America Arc River Residences Project, and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Services to sign.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 5 to 0 with one abstention. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Home program funding for 212 North Market LLC, 212 North Market Project.
Hello again. I am Carmen Hoffine, Real Property Section Manager with the Department of Housing and Community Services, presenting the home program conditional commitment for 212 North Market LLC, 212 North Market. Just, so since I already shared quite a bit of this, I'm going to try to move this kind of quickly. May 14th, 2024, city council approved final allocations from the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan, which included approximately 1.4 million in home and HDLP funding. The HLP is designed to provide subsidies for infill housing projects, support development of real estate that is idle or underutilized, and provide needed housing for underserved populations. HLP funding is available for nonprofit or for-profit organizations. Historically, the funding has been made available within the boundaries of city's redevelopment incentives area, neighborhood revitalization area, local investments areas. Funding requests are received open application basis. 212 North Market LLC submitted an HDLP application for 212 North Market ahead of the 2025 tax credit application process. 212 North Market has proposed a 68-unit apartment project. The project is an adaptive reuse of a historic structure. The 212 North Market Project involves converting the historic 1925 Elks Lodge building located in the Central Business District of Wichita into 68 affordable housing units. The project is across the street from the Lux, which is, is a recently developed 80-unit market-rate apartment building. It's within walking distance from many residential amenities, including the Douglas Avenue Retail District with restaurants, entertainment, and shopping. A market study completed in 2024 showed the units would absorb quickly and address less than 1% of the overall market need for affordable housing. The city has identified incremental affordable housing as a core need, aligning closely with this project's goals. The project also supports the city's Places for People Community Revitalization Plan by preserving historically and architecturally significant buildings while adding new housing opportunities. Funding for the redevelopment will include the use of historic tax credits, further demonstrating the commitment to preserving the building's historic character. Menonite Housing, a Wichita-based organization with extensive experience in Lytec and affordable housing, is an equity partner and is also the proposed manager for the project. With that, I will have Byron Adrian come up as a representative for 212 North Market
Thank you, Carmen. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Byron Adrian with Menonite Housing, and on the screen is a picture of the building at 212 North Market. And this building has been used for a number of years as office space. It currently sets vacant, so our proposal is to convert the building to affordable housing and be able to use this space to address a real need identified here in the City of Wichita. On the screen, you can see a floor plan for one of the floors. This is a five-story building, and there's a couple pictures. When you walk into the front kind of lobby area, got elevators to the left and then stairway to the front, you can see a little bit about what the building looks like currently. And our proposal is to rehab the building for 68 affordable housing units, 17 of which would be three-bedroom, nine-two-bedroom, and 42-one-bedroom units. And a breakdown on those is that we've identified 11 units for 30% AMI, so we focused on 30%, 40%, and 60% AMI households. So 11 of them would be for the 30%, 21 at 40%, and 36, or a little over half of the units would be targeted at the 60% AMI households. Square footage, the one-bedrooms are averaging about 600, a little over 600 square feet, two-bedrooms, a little under 900 square feet, and the three-bedrooms, a little over 1,150 square feet. That's an average, because in a rehab like this, you don't have standard one, two, and three-unit floor plans, so you just kind of work with what the, how the building is structured. Rent rates for the one-bedrooms, there's quite a range on the one-bedrooms, because there's a, a fairly good square footage difference, even in the one-bedroom range. So the one-bedrooms start at 376 up to 716. Again, there's 42 of those. The two-bedrooms are at 943, nine of those, and the three-bedrooms, 17 of those, at a little over $1,250 a month. And this shows finishes for a project that the development group has completed in Kansas City. When, when we were contacted, when Menonite Housing was contacted about being a part of this rehab activity, we wanted to see what kind of work did this development group do. So we scheduled a time to go up to Kansas City, and that's where the architect is located. It's called Exact Architects. And they have extensive experience in doing these kind of adaptive reuse and converting office space to, to homeownership. And so you can see the types of finishes. We're very impressed with the work that they've done. We were able to see completed projects like the Netherland here. And then we're also able to go into one of their current projects that they're rehabbing and see how do they go in and, and rehab the various floors, what stays, what goes, and they pretty much gut the insides of it and keep the, obviously, the exterior, it's structurally sound, and then just redo the interior of it. So we at Menonite Housing saw this and thought this was a great opportunity for us to learn this kind of a rehab activity from experienced developers. Those of you that know the past work that Menonite Housing has done is, when we put these tax credit projects in, it's normally find vacant land, build new. Well, we know there's other opportunities out there. So we're very excited to partner with Sam Edelson and Caleb Land on this project, and they've got over 20 years of experience in doing adaptive reuse, to learn, maybe there's going to be more opportunities in the future here in Wichita for a local developer like Menonite Housing. So that's one of our goals, is to walk along with them. They did need Menonite Housing, or an organization like us, an experienced Lytec developer in the state of Kansas, for them to be able to put this application together and have a, a good opportunity for it to be successful. And so that was our role, and we do end up with a 20% equity ownership in this, and so we're in this for the long run. Another property that we saw, another property they developed in Kansas City, the Monarch. Again, you can see the finishes, so these properties are going to be very well-done.
For financial considerations, there is no impact to the general fund. The total project cost is estimated to be approximately $19.8 million. Anticipated funding sources include $680,000 requested in City of Wichita home funds, 1.6 million merchants capital loan, approximately $6.8 million federal Lytec, approximately $2.4 million federal historic, approximately $3.4 million state historic, $100,000 for 212 North Market LLC's deferred developer fee, $100 general partner equity, approximately $4.6 million private equity. On March 31st, 2025, the HDLP application for this project was presented to the city's Affordable Housing Review Board, who reviewed the application and also the developer at presentation. The Affordable Housing Review Board approved the application and directed staff to refer it to the city council to approve the Director of Housing and Community Services issuance of a conditional commitment letter. New construction of affordable rental housing is an eligible cost under home program. Funding agreement will be drafted, approved as to form by the Law Department, and will be placed on the city council agenda for approval on a future date, provided 212 North Market LLC is successful in securing all proposed sources of financing and meets all the terms set forth in the conditional commitment letter. It is recommended the city council approve issuance of a conditional commitment letter for Home Investment Partnerships Program financing in the amount of $680,000 for the 212 North Market LLC's 212 North Market Project, and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Services to sign. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Carmen, and thank you, Byron. We'll start with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. I know we've talked about Lytec credits before and distant requirements between applications. Will this be affected by that? Obviously, this is for, we're talking about home funds today, but just the application in general, will that be affected by distance requirements?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Sally, saying for the record again, the 9% does not have the distance requirement. It's only the 4% bond finance that has that limitation of projects within one and a half miles of a project awarded in the previous two years, so that does not apply.
Thank you.
Can I have Byron come up? Byron, I am so excited about this, because this particular project came before this council last year, and they were not awarded the Lytec dollars. And I do believe that Menonite Housing is a great partner here in the community in helping with housing, and I'm so grateful that you guys now are seeing that there are other opportunities besides building new, but adaptive reuse being a possibility. And so I want to see more housing, I want to see more density in our core, and I see this as a win-win for the community, as well as a community partner that does a lot of housing in the City of Wichita. So can you share how your expertise in that space will be helpful with this application, and will that help with the application?
In, in terms of our expertise, it's mainly in putting the application together and making sure we get all the points that are possible there, and make it as competitive as possible. And so that was the main role that we were approached by. And so with that, and then the fact that we have been working in this environment for over 30 years, and part of the application looks at our last 10 years of experience. And so Menonite Housing just scores very well, because we've been successful getting an application about every other year, we were able to max out those experience points. And so that is, is one of our main roles right now, is the upfront, pre-planning, application. We're going to turn into learners, once the work actually gets started, and, and watch and learn. It's amazing how, since we've been involved so far with this, as I drive around town, and I see the buildings now, that maybe I didn't focus on so much before, that, okay, write that address down and, and start to create a little bit of a list of what, what might be possible in the future. So thank you, thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Byron, and thank you to the entire team at Menonite Housing.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff, or to Byron. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This actually resides in Councilmember Maggie Ballard's district, but she's not here. So Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you. Since this does reside in Councilmember Maggie Ballard's district, but she's not here, I will move this item. I move to approve the issuance of a conditional commitment letter for Home Investment Partnerships Program financing in the amount of $680,000 for the 212 North Market LLC's 212 North Market Project, and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Services to sign.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 5-0 with one abstention. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
CUP 2025 Number 6, CUP Amendment to Community Unit Plan DP 280 to Permit Warehouse Self-Service Storage as a Use and Exclude Architectural Controls on Proposed Parcel 3D and a Waiver of Supplementary Use Regulation 3-D.6.Y17, generally located on the south side of West Taft Avenue and within 1/4 mile east of South Ridge Road, 6803. and within one quarter mile east of South Ridge Road, 6803 West Taft Avenue.
Good afternoon, Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. So as you heard, for this case, the applicant is requesting the following amendments to the Community Unit Plan DP 151. So they are requesting to permit warehouse self-storage on this particular parcel, which is outlined in blue. They're requesting to subject that parcel to the supplementary use regulations in the zoning code that applies to warehouse self-storage. And as part of that, they are requesting to exempt and provide a waiver for one of the requirements, which is for a resident manager. And then in addition, they are also requesting to exclude this parcel from architectural controls set forth in the CUP. This item is being heard today because the DAB and the Planning Commission have different recommendations for approval. In terms of the requests, the applicant has indicated they are requesting the amendments so that they can develop the site for warehouse self-storage. The applicant is requesting that the existing CUP architectural controls not apply to the proposed new parcel so that metal can be a predominant exterior material that's in use on the building. The property is currently zoned GC, General Commercial District, and warehouse self-storage does, is not subject to supplementary use regulations when located in that district. However, as you heard, the applicant is proposing that the site would be subject to those particular conditions. In addition, the applicant is requesting the waiver, which we spoke about, which is for the resident manager. In terms of the property, the site is generally located to the north and west of Taft Avenue. Sorry, it's to the south and west of Taft Avenue and Dugan Road. It consists of three ownership parcels, all under the same ownership. It's approximately 1.6 acres in size, zone GC, located within the Community Unit Plan and currently is undeveloped. The existing Community Unit Plan includes the subject site and multiple properties to the southwest and east. It's quite a large CUP. In terms of context, properties to the north across Taft Avenue are zoned SF5, single family, and developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the east is zoned GC, within the same CUP and developed with a retail business. Property to the south is zoned GC, within the same CUP and developed with large strip mall. And property to the west is zoned GC, within the same CUP and developed as general retail. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about architectural controls, landscaping, signage, and parking. In terms of review, on March 27th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and voted 10 to 0 to recommend the following. And that is they recommended approval of the CUP amendments to allow warehouse self-storage, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. They also recommended approval of the waiver of the supplementary use regulation. And they also are recommending denial of the CUP amendment to exclude the subject site from the CUP architectural controls. No members of the public spoke at that public hearing. On April 7th, the District Advisory Board heard the application and recommended approval of the request, 7 to 2. The recommendation was very similar to the Planning Commission, but with some modifications. And those modifications include the following, that up to 30% of the building's north facade facing towards West Taft Avenue could be metal. And that up to 30% of the easternmost facade of the eastmost building could be metal. And to allow any buildings, west-facing and south-facing facades to be metal. So in that way, it was different because they are allowing more use of metal in the exterior of the building. No protests were received against the application. So in terms of recommendation, it's recommended the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the CUP amendment and waiver, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the resolution after approval. And that would require just four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following, you can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings and approve the CUP amendment as recommended by the DAB because it's an override that would require five of seven votes. You can also override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings and deny the request. That would require five of seven votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. Just a quick note on process, city council policy is that the public hearing takes place at the Planning Commission and the city council does not typically receive public comments. And with that, I'll take you through the images and graphics. Here's an aerial. Here's the zoning, which was discussed. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing commercial uses what's recommended in the area. Here's the CUP map, which shows parcel 3D in red up at the top. Here's the notification map and protest map against, no protests were submitted. And here are photos from the site and the surrounding area. Okay, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for staff? I see none. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this at DAB and DAB actually recommended some modifications to allow larger use for the building or a different use. And so I will make a motion to override the MAPC, approve the requested CUP amendment and waiver per the DAB recommendation. This motion approve the amendment of the Planning Commission recommended conditions with the following modifications. The modifications to MAPC's recommendation would allow the following for parcel 3D. Up to 30% of any building's north facade facing towards West Avenue to be metal. Up to 30% of the easternmost facade of the easternmost building to be metal. And allow any buildings west-facing and south-facing to be metal. And support the DAB recommendation achieves a better balance between potential effects in nearby properties and development of the subject site.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Zone 2025, five, zone change request in the city from TF3 to family residential to NR Neighborhood Retail to permit retail uses associated with the church, generally located on the northeast corner of West 11th Street North and North Waco Avenue, 1200 North Waco Avenue.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Before Scott's presentation, this resides in Councilwoman Ballard's district. Councilwoman Ballard had to step out. And so I would make a motion that we defer this for the May 13th.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
DER 2024, eight, daycare, general land use in residential zoning districts.
Hello and good afternoon again. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. So this item is to consider whether to adopt amendments to the Wichita Cedric County Unified Zoning Code. Here's the recommended action. I'll cover this again towards the end of the presentation. So the Unified Zoning Code includes multiple definitions for daycare. Daycare general is one of the terms, and that is a daycare that can provide protection and supervision for more than 12 individuals. It can operate with fewer, but it's unique because it allows more than 12. It is not operated as a home occupation, so think of a, a business. Daycare limited is a daycare that provides protection and supervision for up to 12 individuals. So 12 or fewer. And a quick note here is that earlier, there were modifications that were made to the Unified Zoning Code related to this, and that was to increase the, those allowed supervision numbers up to 12 individuals, and that was to align it with KDHE regulations. Home occupation is also a term that's covered in the zoning code, and that is the use of a home for something other than a dwelling by the resident. Typically, these are limited to incidental and accessory uses that are perceived to not adversely affect the integrity of residential areas. Currently, if you want to use a property zoned in one of the districts on this slide for daycare general, then you need to apply for and receive a conditional use. And that process will take you through the District Advisory Board, through the Planning Commission, ultimately up to the city council typically. The recommended amendment to the Unified Zoning Code would permit daycare general through, to be allowed in one of those residential districts through an administrative permit process. And so that would allow it so that you could have more than 12 individuals under supervision. And there's a caveat there that it all depends on how many you are licensed for. Because again, we cannot exceed, well, that, there's not a limitation on this, but the limitation would be KDHE and their licensing in terms of how much space, how many people do you have providing supervision or care? And then it would also allow you to operate daycare general not as a home occupation in one of the zoning districts listed on this slide. So you wouldn't have to have the resident there engaged in the business. The recommended amendment to the Unified Zoning Code would limit the use of the administrative permit for daycare general to children under 16 years of age. This is a little bit unique because the Planning Commission, who is recommending this to you, they were concerned that, they wanted to make sure that it was children that were being cared for. And if there were folks that wanted to provide daycare general for other ages, they could still do that, but that would just be requiring a conditional use process to do that. With the administrative permit process, public notice is mailed to the owners of land that abut and adjoining the application area. This is very similar, this is a similar process or the same process that's used for short-term rentals. There's a 14-day protest period. If more than 50% of the owners abutting and adjoining land, of a, abutting and adjoining land protests, then the application would be denied. The applicant would have the option of continuing forward and submitting a conditional use application, which then would go through the usual process of Planning Commission and District Advisory Boards. So here's an illustration that shows what it means to have contiguous and abutting properties. So in this scenario, the orange property would be the application site. The blue properties are the abutting and contiguous properties. When we talk about owners of record, that is all the owners of the property. So if it's a couple that owns a property, then both of them would have to sign the protest. Here's a review, the process to develop this recommendation. So it went to MAPC advanced plans. It went to the, there was a city council initiation. It went to the full MAPC, and then here we are at the planning, at the city council. And later would be considered if approved by the county commission because of the joint code. So again, here's the recommended action to adopt the findings, approve the proposed amendment, sign the ordinance, and authorize the ordinance to be published. Now, just a quick note that because this is on the planning agenda, public comments are not typically accepted because a public hearing is done at the Planning Commission. However, if you would like to accept public comment, you can suspend that policy for this item if you wish. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I see no questions, but I do have Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Guadalupe Clinic, we looked into for daycare and I learned way more than I ever thought I'd know. And one thing I did learn was that Councilmember Tuttle has put a lot of work into this and has championed this, and I, I think she should be commended for, for getting this changed. So thank you very much.
With that, Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you very much. Pardon me, now I have to call. I just need to thank a bunch of people because this has been a long journey. Thank you to Legal and for answering all of our questions. I think we came to a good compromise because we were kind of, we're all over the place. Thank you, obviously, to our childcare licensing team and Adrian, the fantastic supervisor, who just keeps everybody motivated and excited about the great work that they do. Thank you to Gary Jansen in Public Works, who now that he is the director, has childcare under his division. And I think he's really embraced it and understands the importance as well. Also want to thank Childstar, Tanya Bullock, the CEO. We, we could not have done this without her, and she truly was with Adrian, our, our champion but content expertise, experts. I want to thank the childcare community. Obviously today, we did a proclamation for them and gave them recognition, but this was their idea. Last summer, when we had our childcare entrepreneur workshop, this was one of the items that they brought to our attention. And so I hope that Adrian and your team can help spread the word that when childcare providers have a need, have an idea, we try and make it come to fruition the best we can. So please tell them to keep providing us with solutions so that we can address this incredible shortage of childcare within our city. As was mentioned during the proclamation this morning, if we can't have childcare spots available, people can't go to work to build planes, to do surgery, to put out fires, to teach kids. So this is an economic development and a workforce issue. So thank you to everyone who's been involved in this journey. Really appreciate it, glad to get to this point today. And with that, I will enthusiastically move that the city council adopt the recommended amendment to the Unified Zoning Code amendment, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Agenda, approval to exceed the gift limit established by the Ethics Ordinance for Mayor Wu to accept travel and expenses to attend the 2025 Heartland Summit in Bentonville, Arkansas, in Bentonville, Arkansas, from May 6th to May 9th for the purpose of representing the city. The Heartland Summit is hosted by the nonprofit Heartland Forward for the purpose of education, collaboration, professional development. The summit serves as a platform for sharing best practices, fostering cross-sector collaboration, and spotlighting success stories like Wichita's to inspire action and investment in mid-sized cities. The estimated gift amount for travel, hotel, and meals is $1,112. Estimated cost covered by the city for Mayor Wu is $0.
I, I will move that we approve the, exceed the gift limit established by the Ethics Ordinance for Mayor Wu to accept travel and expenses to attend the 2025 Heartland Summit in Bentonville, Arkansas, from May 6th to May 9th for the purpose of representing the city.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Begin with appointments. Are there any? I have some, so I will go ahead and, I would like to appoint Councilmember Dalton Glasscock to the Wichita Sister Cities Organization. I also would like to appoint Brandon Paulstein to the Board of Park Commissioners and Julie Harbert to the Animal Services Advisory Board.
Second.
Second.
Move, move to accept those nominations.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. We will now have Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just going to say thank you to everyone who helped with the Prairie Fire 5K and all those who attended. And we wish we could have saw Councilmember Hoheisel there, but he did not show up with us. But it was a good time. That was my second 5K, but it was great to see all the folks out there running. Definitely not in as good a shape as Councilmember Glasscock, but it was good to see all, all the folks out there, not doing the half marathon.
I'm very sore, so I pushed myself too far.
And also all the folks that showed up in Parks Department for Open Streets Nomar. That was awesome, always a great experience. Love to see a lot of Wichitaans out there, so it was a really good weekend.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there was a lot going on this weekend, and I'd just like to give a shout out to the chief and some of our representatives from the fire department. They were out at the Fight Fentanyl Awareness Rally Saturday. It's always a therapeutic event for people to get out to and really kind of organize around some strategies in the future and also listening to the public about kind of their ideas, what we should do with the opioid money that is being worked on currently. So special shout out to everybody who threw that and attended. And the second point, if Councilmember Johnson's feeling froggy, maybe we'll go out to a field and do a 40-meter race and see how that goes. Don't let me, I'm deceptive. I'm deceptive on that speed, so we'll see how that ends up.
I'm still recovering from the 5K.
Sounds like a convenient excuse.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I will just add one quick item. Last Tuesday, we had our second unbank of the year.
Last Tuesday, we had our second en banc of the year. There are still two more en bancs left, which is an opportunity for city and county to come together. The next en bancs are July 29th and October 29th. But before that, the first-ever Wichita Community Town Hall will be held right here in city council chambers. It will be three government entities coming together, their leaders will come together. I will be representing as the mayor for the city of Wichita. Chairman Beatty will represent Cedric County, and Board President Diane Albert will represent USD 259 School Board. And this will be an opportunity on Wednesday, June 4th, for this town hall. It begins at 5 o'clock with introductions, followed by a full hour of listening to the community, two minutes per individual. And then the last remaining portion of the meeting, there will be group discussions on shared services and collaboration. So I'm looking forward to hosting Diane as well as Ryan here in the council chambers for the first Wichita Community Town Hall. I, Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Will you all three be sitting here, all three of you looking out over the public?
We'll be, we'll remove names so that they can sit up here, and we will be listening to the community, but definitely invite the whole community to come out and councilmembers as well. I see no further comments, so I will move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Seriously, a nay? Okay. Motion passes 5 to 1. Meeting is adjourned.